Oh, you know, we're hanging in there, you know, because they're giving me a ransom of money. Grateful and honored to be there. I'm looking for you. I like the picture.
You see her all over the pictures, all over Lansing. You had a good time at the governor's party, didn't you? Were you at the governor's? No, you were at the swearing in. That's what it was. You were at the party too. Alright.
I know. Well, they have like a couple days of party. Oh, for you? This is Nick, by the way.
Nick Abler, nice to meet you.
I talked with her. And I told her to call me anytime. Thank you for that, because my phone's on. Hi, Councilwoman.
Hey, honey, I was waiting. You had all of your fans around. Didn't know if I could get your bodyguard, your security guard.
Oh, well, sorry. You gotta listen to that, though, right? I don't know if that was in the job description.
Ones that just don't work anymore.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, good evening. The bell tolls six o'clock PM, so we'll commence this meeting of your Pontiac City Council for, what day is it, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, is hereby called to order. Welcome. We gather tonight to make decisions and make strategic investments as a community to improve our beloved city of Pontiac, Michigan. First, we give the floor to Councilman Parker to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, Brother President. I would like to introduce everyone Pastor Jerry Love of the Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. He is here to give us our invocation this evening. Pastor Love.
Let us all pray. Our God and our Father, we come both boldly but humbly before your throne of grace and mercy. We come, Lord, praying for all those that are in office, all those that hold positions in this city, that we all can come together under unity, that you, Father, would lead and guide us according to the way that we should go. Bless each and every one that's here tonight, bless those who wanted to be here but couldn't, and we just ask for your mercy and grace to cover us as we cover this city. We ask all of these things in your son Jesus' name, for his sake we pray. Amen.
Please remain, uh, rise or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now remain standing for a somber occasion, a moment of silence as a community, as we remember the names of Monica Kennedy and of her two sons, the Miltons, who were found deceased this weekend. And we also lift up in prayer and well wishes her daughter, who is surviving but going through medical treatment. So we, as a community, have been shaken by this news, and let us now come together as a community for a moment of silence, remembering her, remembering her two beautiful sons, and also lifting up in prayer her daughter as she struggles with her recovery. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes. Present.
Goodman. James.
Yes. Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have quorum.
All members, Councilman Goodman is also present in voting. All members present in voting. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that we approve this evening's agenda as presented. So now that that motion is before us, could I please have a motion to amend the agenda, to create a new number eight and move all other resolutions down? And that number eight is resolution approving the mayor's appointments to the Pontiac Planning Commission.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Council President Pro Tem Carrington, that we create a new number eight and then move all the other items down, and that's appointments to the Planning Commission. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on that amendment to the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is so amended. We're back to the main motion of adoption of the agenda as amended. Any further discussion, changes, clarifications? Hearing nothing further. Speakers list exhausted. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is adopted. We'll proceed accordingly. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. This evening's, so that motion is now before us. This evening's consent agenda has three meeting minute sets. One is the most recent Economic Development Housing and Planning Subcommittee, and the Finance and Personnel Subcommittee, as well as the most recent regular city council meeting minutes. So with that, roll call and adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
A yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. We now are at our first of two special presentations. Congresswoman Haley Stevens, proudly representing the city of Pontiac in the new congressional district, following the lines in the recent election. In the new year, we give the floor to you for a legislative update. The Honorable Haley Stevens, welcome, Congresswoman.
Thank you. Well, good evening, my dear and good friends of Pontiac, Pontiac City Council, and Mr. Mayor. It's a true honor to be home from the work that we do in Washington, this in-district work period that was kicked off with yesterday's Martin Luther King Junior Day holiday, a day of reflection and celebration, as well as remembrance for Dr. King's vision for this country. And I was so pleased to be with Pastor Jones yesterday and the Pontiac Coalition that brings people together on behalf of this great city as we recognize Dr. King's work. And in fact, yesterday was such a wonderful event. It got the wheels turning in my own mind about how we can take Pontiac's stewardship, the leadership that is present before us here today with me to the halls of Congress. But as Mr. Council President shared, it is still the new year. And in fact, it has been a long start to this year, if you happen to watch the marathon series of just getting us sworn in as members of Congress in that first week. And I share that with all of you, in part, because it is a reminder of what we're up against in Washington. We have a new majority. It's a small majority. The, to be political for a minute, the Democratic Caucus feels very energized and excited about continuing to do the work on behalf of the people, but it's not going to be our set of legislation, right? You saw Nancy Pelosi pass the torch of leadership in our caucus to my good friend Hakeem Jeffries. He has an affinity for Michigan. He has an open invitation for Michigan, so please stay tuned for future visits from Democratic leader Hakeem Jeffries. And if you haven't had a chance to see his speech before Kevin McCarthy was recognized as Speaker, I really encourage all of you to watch that, because that is what fuels our mission, you know? Democratic values, A to Z, that he shared, and frankly, values that we see seething through the work that we're doing here in Pontiac: inclusion, economic growth, focusing on ending gun violence, racial reconciliation, and on and on. And so I am so proud to be in a Democratic Caucus that includes somebody like Hakeem Jeffries, the first man of color, the first person of color to ever lead a caucus in the House, to have ever taken that position, and that is in and of itself historic and really quite remarkable. And it's a reminder, too, of what we are capable of here, what we're capable of here in Michigan and obviously for the nation. But to get very specific with all of you in terms of my goals and the ways in which I'm really excited to work with all of you in this very council in the forthcoming year, in the legislative term, it is two years long, so it, you know, we get two years in the one hundred and eighteenth Congress to do the work of the people before the Democrats take back the majority. So I'm joined here tonight by one of my case managers, Nick Abler. This city will be getting to know Nick very well. Casework, in case you're not familiar, is the work that we do to serve our residents in our district. And Congresswoman Haley Stevens has put a premium, the whole time I've been in office, on casework in making sure that residents who have issues before the federal government that sometimes get gummed up have somebody who's dedicated to untangling that bureaucracy. So what does that look like? And certainly to my friends in city council, you know, as you're working with your individual residents and these issues come up, all of you should know how to reach me. Please let us know. Because when someone says, "Well, thank you so much for, you know, offering the help," or "Thank you for helping," I say, "No, no, thank you," because until I hear from you, I don't know if we can help you. So this is IRS issues. We all know sometimes the checks get lost in the mail, especially during rebate time. Social Security and disability. We've had record-breaking casework successes all across Oakland County for Social Security, and oftentimes, right, you have somebody who's on that disability, and then the system misfiles something, and then that check gets misplaced, and that's someone's life, right? And these are real-world stories with Social Security, and so we want to help with those matters. We obviously can do some intake with HUD and vouchers. We're beginning a scope of work on that front. We really applaud the work of the Pontiac Housing Commission and Councilmember Rutherford for their leadership in that regard, because frankly, all across Oakland County, we can do better on housing, which is certainly something that we're all evaluating in the wake of the loss of Monica Kennedy's life and some of the other wraparound services that we dedicate ourselves to as elected officials: education, mental health, community services, and I know this community is focused on that and continues to be a gold standard all across Oakland County. In addition to casework, we are going to be focused on implementation of the legislation, the record-breaking legislation that we got passed in the one hundred and seventeenth session of Congress, starting with a rescue act, which I know that the mayor, you know, hit the ground running and his predecessor worked on in terms of making sure that those dollars alongside Oakland County are properly allocated. A lot of monies for our schools. We all remember the big vaccine push. We're obviously still pushing on folks and encouraging them to get their booster shots. The infrastructure dollars, and certainly, I know a priority of this city is the transportation. We just passed the Oakland County Millage for Transportation. Hooray! So those dollars, we want to utilize and see come to Michigan. That's why that millage passage was so, so important for our county in the accessibility of jobs, jobs and workforce training. Now, last, at the end of last year, monies got appropriated to Pontiac through Congresswoman Lawrence, in particular, who, you know, was our now-retired Congresswoman for Pontiac. We're so proud of her leadership in service, monies for the Webster Community Center, as well as monies for some of our roads here in Pontiac. I will continue to be the go-to for the allocation of those dollars, because they still have to come from federal agencies, and we expect smooth sailing on that front. But we also plan to be, I plan to be, a communicator with all of you on that front. We will go through another appropriation cycle. Again, we have a new majority in the Congress. We have people who actually believe in shutting down the government, unfortunately, as a friendly reminder. They cost our economy eleven billion dollars every time they do that. That's what the last one did. So we don't want to have a shutdown. I want to work with all of you on identifying what is sometimes known as earmarks. They don't allow us to use that term, but community-directed project funding. And so one of the things that I was just bragging about, all of you on Pontiac City Council today about, is that you have your district meetings. And as a federal lawmaker, I really deeply want to thank you for having district meetings, because when I'm home and I can't come to a city council meeting and I can come to your district meeting, it really helps to hear from residents and to hear from all of you in terms of the work you're doing. And certainly, Mr. Mayor, your great vision for this city and your communication channels, which just make a huge difference. Thank you for having your state-of-the-city addresses, and thank you for so nicely outlining yesterday your economic vision for this city. I'm going to remain, for all intents and purposes, as far as we know right now, on the Education and Labor Committee, so so eager to work with all of you on the youth engagement and workforce development opportunities, as well as our social agenda. We're excited that Lansing's got a new majority. They're going to pass some red flag laws. I know we're dedicated to dealing with gun violence all across southeastern Michigan. Pontiac, yet again, has been a leader. We passed a bipartisan gun safety bill last year in the Congress, so when Michigan passes its red flag laws, we will be in line for those dollars. So please absorb that. You know, we'll be working with our schools and our other resource centers on that. And lastly, well, and I could go on, because there's so many exciting things with the CHIPS and Science Bill and the monies for workforce training out of that, so tuck that one away. In addition to the Inflation Reduction Act, the largest bill for climate in frankly, the world. You know, the US leading the world on this front. And out of Inflation Reduction Act, there's a lot of benefits for individual consumers. So as the mayor has also outlined a vision for housing rehabilitation and is so nicely, in my opinion, working with the Oakland County government on accessing dollars for residents who are looking to rehab their homes. We've got monies out of Inflation Reduction Act, if you want to put solar panels and all that other good stuff. So federal agencies, workforce development, passing the nation's laws, these are the things that I am going to be up to in the Congress and certainly continuing to be a very eager resource player with all of you. Our schools with free and reduced lunch, that's going to be a major priority. You know, very proud of our Meals on Wheels program here in Pontiac and some of the other programs that exist throughout Oakland County, but we need to double down on those dollars as well, and so that's another big priority mine in the Congress. So thank you so much for the time, Mr. Councilman.
If you don't object, or your schedule allows, are there any questions or feedback from members of council or the mayor? Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Well, I just want to thank you, Congresswoman, for your leadership, for how supportive you are of Pontiac, for your visibility and your engagement with the community here. It was so great seeing you around town this past weekend. I think you attended, by my count, at least three major things here. You were at the Winterfest, you were at the swearing-in ceremony at the Crowfoot for our wonderful state representative, and then you were also at the Dr. King luncheon at the Marriott on Monday, yesterday. So really great to see you out and about. You have a long track record of being out and about in Pontiac, and we're just so grateful for everything you do, for your tremendous service, for your integrity, and for everything you do for the community here. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, you all make it easy, and your Congresswoman loves you and loves the city and is so glad that, you know, we, you know, can be together in this way. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rutherford.
Good evening. Just wanted to make sure that you gave out the number or information for this gentleman who's going to be working on those social issues.
That is a great idea. Nick, do you want to share your number with everybody? And business cards, and we've, so we got a new district, so we got new pamphlets, and we're going to be dropping them off outside city council, so you'll have how to reach us. And one of the things that we really believe in, and that I believe in, in how I approach government and why I love spending this time with all of you, is that we have got to have flat tables, right? We can't be passing the football around. Our residents pay for this government. They're relying on this government to work with them, so if they're talking to their council member or talking to their mayor or talking to their great state representative, they should know that we are all here to troubleshoot, and where it is our role to step in, we will. So Nick, why don't you share your number here?
Yeah, absolutely. If anyone ever has any issues with federal agencies, please call our district office. That number is seven three four eight five three three oh four oh. I also have business cards as well, if anyone would like them, so you can have that information.
Say your number one more time.
Sure, yeah. Seven three four eight five three three oh four oh.
Councilman Rutherford.
Oh, just wanted to make sure you passed out the business card so that we as council have them. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Great idea.
Any further questions or commentary on this special presentation? All right, with that, thank you very much for your time, Congresswoman Stevens and your team.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Our next special presentation, Mr. Mayor, we give the floor to you, introducing the city of Pontiac's new building official.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am looking to see if he is here, and I don't see him. So Deputy Mayor, if you're able to locate the department staff who are going to be involved in this, that would be great.
All right, for the sake of time, we're at recognition of elected officials. Are there any current elected officials in our community that wish to be recognized at this evening? We can move now to agenda address. President Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests for agenda address this evening?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. We have several. Mr. Norman Elam, please take the mic. Thank you.
Thank you to the president of the council, the, his assistant. I am nervous, so. This is my first time addressing to the mayor and to my councilperson, Melanie, Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford. And as Bill Maxie would say, Mr. and Miss Pontiac. We're here because the council, I believe, is on the crest of approving rec, or adult-use marijuana, okay? This council and the mayor has emphasized that they want, excuse me, Pontiac involved. The resolution that you guys put forth last week knocked us out, excuse me, it knocked us out. When you said that there would not be adult use in the Woodward area overlay, Woodward overlay, that knocks me out. Prior to that, we have been approved for the medical. But as you all know, that the medical, the economics of the medical is not there now. So everyone is participating that you pass adult use. We're looking forward to it, too. And we're in a position, and my team have put together all paperwork to be a part of the adult use, and we want to be a part. You guys have stressed Pontiac involvement. And you can't get no more Pontiac than the Elams. The Elams are Pontiac, okay? Our parents were here, and, you know, sad, and it brings tears to our eyes if they're no longer here. But we are Pontiac, and every one of you know, if you don't know me personally, you have heard of the Elams, and you know our Elam, okay? So we're asking you to do a resolution to put us back involved as Pontiac, and we will appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is it Ms. Christine Elam?
Good evening, Pontiac, mayor and city council. I am even more nervous. My heart is pounding really fast. But however, I stand before you, first of all, to let you know that we don't come breathing out any threatenings. That's not us. What we come is asking you if you will consider us. We are Pontiac, as my husband said. You can't get any more Pontiac than we are. Parents have raised us to think Pontiac. We live Pontiac. We eat Pontiac. We breathe Pontiac. We are Pontiac. We try to do everything that we can to be viable citizens and restaurant owners, community developers. We love the just being here. We love the just being here, and we're very thankful for you all even wanting to listen to us, to perhaps consider us, and we do hope that you do that. Everything, my husband and I, this past November, been married 48 years. I just had a birthday last week. I am 68. God has blessed me to still be here. We're so thankful for that. Everything here in Pontiac, as I was telling my husband, everybody that's a Smith, that's a Jones, that's a Williams, it's not related, but everything in Pontiac has Elam blood flowing through it. We even teach our children to be good citizens. We have seven grandchildren, we have one bonus grandchild, we have one great-grand. We're here. We're here to stay, and we're asking you, we're asking you to be considerate of us. I'm sorry, I planned on not doing this, and I'm going to sit down real quick, but think about us. Please think about us. Think about what you said that you would do for us. We're here, and we're here to stay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is it Alina King?
Good evening to our mayor and our councilmen and councilwomen. My question was, I was informed that there were grants available in the city for new businesses and even helping with homeowners' home purchases. And I came to the office today, and I went from upstairs to downstairs, and nobody could give me any answers. So, I asked several people that they even know the state representative, Brenda Carter, and it was like I was talking about somebody foreign. And I happened to have a picture, someone said, "Oh, yeah, I know her." So, what I would like to know, if it is available, any funding, what is the process? Who do I talk to? Where do I go? Because from year to year, I hear there's fundings in the city of Pontiac, but no one can actually direct me to the person or even the process. That's pretty much it for me.
Thank you. Legislative Council Sharp, if you could just grab contact information for Ms. King, it wasn't on the sign-in sheet, if you might be able to do that. So, that way, our staff could connect, and it looks like the mayor will get your contact info, too.
Mr. Aaron, is it Greer?
Guyer.
Guyer, okay.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm here to speak on item number five of your agenda. This is another visit to our adult-use ordinance, and the comments I want to make regard scoring sections nine, 10, and 11. In category nine, you award 20 points for the existing marijuana, medical marijuana licensees that began construction 30 days before application. I would be one of those 20 licensees, or my client would be one of those 20 licensees. But here's the quandary that I see. We now compare item number nine, which is worth 20 points, against items numbers 10 and 11, which, again, have a cumulative value of 20 points. In 10 and 11, we concentrate on whether the particular property is vacant. In number 11, we concentrate on whether the property was blighted or in dangerous condition. And so, it looks like this council unfortunately has misplaced value, because this council has determined that the existing marijuana applicants have value, but yet, if I simply happen to be a non-licensee who has a property, which is a piece of blank, that has the same value. It can't. You basically have already said it yourselves, that the licensees bring value because they were determined to be your best qualified candidates, but yet, owning garbage property is worth equal value. It can't be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Colton Jones?
Good evening, council, mayor, and everybody here in the city of Pontiac. I'm back to talk about this issue also, and I was very touched, because I've been knowing that Elams here for all my life. Matter of fact, we all grew up close around each other in the same area. And this one issue, I want to say this much. Last week, we talked about it, and I want to commend Pro Tem Carrington for coming up what I thought was a viable solution to this issue. And I also want to commend Clerk Doyle, who's tried to keep this to be very fair and open to the public, as I've watched this process. But as a business person and as a community person, I want to say that we have to be very conscientious of decisions we make and how it affects our total city, and especially on issues where we have businesspeople who want to come to our city, and it seems as if, though, sometimes, we're not being fair. The mayor's talked about economic justice. I think we talk about economic justice when we be fair to businesspeople who try to come in this city and do business the right way that we've asked them to. This one issue of these five businesses who chose to be in the non-overlay areas, I think we need to rectify that, that they're not treated any differently than any other overlay areas. That was a choice that they made, and they should not be penalized because of that choice. And that vote last week, we all know, if we had a full council vote on that, that vote would have passed. So, we got to take in consideration what is best to our city. And I'm just hoping that we will try to resolve issues and not sweep it upon the rug and act like they don't make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
I came to address Agenda Item Three, but it would be remiss if I did not mention something that very tragic happened in Pontiac. It's a past elected official. I know you elected officials feel the same way, and that was for the young mother who passed with two children of hypothermia, froze to death, and it feels right here in Pontiac. And it just reminds us, particularly as elected officials, that our chief responsibility is the care and responsibility and safety and welfare of our citizens, even the least of those, some of those who fall outside of the safety net, because in her instance, she may not have had the faculty to protect her family. But it just reminds us that we need to do the best we can to increase that safety net and for people, tragic incidences like this don't happen right here in our own backyards in the city of Pontiac. So, I just wanted to remember this moment and share my thoughts, as I'm sure you have as well. And I thank our Congresswoman for coming, because I know the care and the welfare of families is a good part of her agenda for what she is working for as our Congresswoman in Washington, D.C. I do thank her for that, and I thank her also for remembering the ARP money, which is here, and it's supposed to be used for the relief, COVID-19 relief, for our citizens and businesses. And I hope we can put that money to work now, and I hope we withdraw that $10 million that we put to cover the deficit in our budget and make sure it goes back for what it was intended, and that was for COVID relief for our citizens and our businesses, and get that to work right away. But the Agenda Item Three was the one in which you called the reorganization of departments, but it was actually to reduce the qualifications for some of our highest officials, appointed officials. I see a lot of you have the same concerns I had. You lumped them together, but I don't know any finance department in any municipal city that has, handles a budget that does not have a CPA. So, I ask you not to be coerced to lower the qualifications for those important positions that serve the city so well.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Jen Zglinski?
I'm Jen Zglinski with Common Citizen, coming to speak on item number five within the ordinance, the marijuana, excuse me, within the Agenda, the marijuana ordinance. I have a couple of items that I just want to make sure. I speak on behalf of Common Citizen, as well as making sure that the voices or the ears in this room also have an opportunity to hear it. The contentiousness behind this non-overlay district and keeping them out of the opportunity that other businesses of the same kind would have is baffling to me. Marijuana retailers are not a type of business that bring window shoppers. Marijuana retailers are more closely aligned to that of a pharmacy or a liquor store, even a gas station. It's a quick in-and-out stop. People aren't there to linger, they're not there to go walk around the mall afterwards. These folks are far less likely to stop if they have to consider that they have to find parking, potentially walk a block or two before they get to their quick, convenient stop, and then head back to their car two blocks away and get back on their route. Plus, as it relates to delivery within the state of Michigan, marijuana retailers are not required to seek municipal approval for marijuana deliveries. This is mandated by the state, and applicants are required to file the proper paperwork, and the state approves it, and those operators then, within any municipality, can provide delivery. So, being able to have accessibility in downtown is important, but it's not the only driver that's going to generate foot traffic into the downtown area. The excise tax starts when a operational adult-use retailer has come online. In fiscal year 2022, a municipality with one location would receive $56,400. For the city of Pontiac, if in fiscal year 2022, your excise tax revenue sharing could have potentially been $1,128,000 to use as the city best sees fit.
That does conclude your time.
Additionally...
All right, thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I too come on behalf of the Elams regarding the marijuana issue, but this marijuana concern has become so combobulated and so upside-down that average folk don't even know which way is up as individuals at the table speak about it. However, I know it was promised that whatever the case may be, city-based individuals who try to get and be a part of this industry should have and wanted to have an opportunity to be involved. Norman, as I know him, has been an anchor in this city over 50 years that I know of. He's owned over brick and mortar, same as I was, but I got lucky and I sold mine, because this marijuana thing ain't flying. However, I would hope that this council would look at whatever resolve or whatever resolution you can put together that would not only give the Elams some more encouragement as to what they are going to be able to look forward down the road as this moves forward, but also to help them to stay in and be in a part of this marijuana industry. And I think if any family in this city deserves that, it would be the Elam family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Miller?
Good evening, Norman and Christine. You know, it's ironic, I didn't know they were going to be here today, because I came down to talk about you guys, so I guess you can hear me in person. I grew up with this family all my life, on the East Side. You know, what I'm looking at is like deja vu. When I was sitting up there, this is the same thing that was going on with us, dragging, changing the rules as we go along. And you did a non-overlay, these people have been waiting over three years to get here, and then a new council comes, the city wanted a new council, and look what they do. See, I will say this, all for maybe Melanie, because Melanie, I knew you grew up in the city of Pontiac, and Ms. Catherine James, it's roots. Anybody that live in this city know the Elams. They know the Elams. They're good people. And then, when you vote, you vote, you vote your own out. You vote your own out. These are the people that work here, pay taxes here. When I was on council, Norman was the best. He was my right-hand man, always there, never complains. Take that into account when you look at, when you do things up there. I always, my concern was always my constituents, never about me, because I'm blessed. That's why I can do what I do, because I have no agenda. I care about the people. And for you to forget the Elams? Please don't do that. That wouldn't be a good idea. That really wouldn't be a good idea. I would think you guys need to rethink this, work this out, and besides, they were there already, and you take them out of the non-overlay? We put that in place, and then you come in and change the game. Pontiac, pay attention. If Elams don't get in, and first, not just the Elam, whoever's in the non-overlay, even the ones that don't like me. See, I'm about right. I'm not just a person, I'm for right and for wrong, and it's wrong what you have done to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Larry Jasper?
How you doing, guys? Happy New Year.
What particular item, sir?
Three to five. It's basically about social justice. You guys talk about social justice. That means taking care of your citizens, and I don't see that happening. I see money taking over. I see people getting privileged because they have ways of pushing around the council, leveraging the council. Social justice is taking care of your people, citizens of Pontiac. So, I ask you to do that. I have nothing more to say.
Thank you. That concludes Agenda Address. President McGinnis.
Thank you. Revisiting special presentations. Administration, are you ready for a second? All right. Without that, we move now to item number...
If we could, Mr. President, if we could postpone that a week, that would be ideal.
Okay. I don't think it would require a vote since it's a special presentation. Thank you. So, we are at the second reading of Adoption of Amendment to Ordinance 2287 that deals with the structure of departments, specifically Finance Director and Public Works Director. So, we are at item number three before we have discussion and potential amendments. And this is the second reading, so we may act on it, but we may want to have even further time and review. So, we don't, we're not obligated to make that final decision tonight, but before we have discussion and potential amendments, mayor or administration, anything further you'd like to elaborate on for this second reading?
There is not, no.
Okay. So, we are at this proposed ordinance amendment under Director for Public Works and Deputy Director for Public Works, as well as Director for Finance, Director. It strikes, the language proposal would strike degree requirements and years' experience requirements. The administration's rationale shared last week was that it would keep it in line with the other department director positions in the ordinances that don't explicitly spell out some of these requirements. But so, is there, we don't have to necessarily do all in one fell swoop if you want to focus just on Public Works.
I'd like to ask for a reading so the public can understand the language that's included.
Well, hold on. All right, so speaker's list, Councilman Nicholson caught my eye first. So, Councilman Nicholson wants it read, that's easy. Councilwoman Rutherford will be next on the speaker's list. Do you have a clarifying question, Clerk Doyle?
Yeah, and this may be the administration gave some proposed language change. Oh, was that, oh...
Yeah, that's right. I asked for the reading.
Okay, all right, okay. So, I just...
Well, I gave the administration the opportunity to expand on it, and you didn't. So, Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I did try to raise my hand after initially declining, because I don't know if the council has in front of them the new proposed language, but we heard a number of city council members... has in front of them the new proposed language, but we heard a number of city council members last week suggest that they wanted to provide for greater flexibility without just being silent about qualifications. And so we have proposed some middle ground here, and I believe city council has that language as part of your packet, where we do state that we do have certain preferred qualifications that include a combination of degrees and experience, and we certainly welcome any questions the council members have regarding that.
Okay, so I want to make sure that the council and the community is familiar. This is language that we would do as an amendment to the language before us. How about we do that? Is there a motion to amend, to add this additional language? Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that for this ordinance amendment, we add this language proposed by the administration. Under 2192 Director, it would strike the language as it had previously been proposed to strike that says the Finance Director shall have a master's degree in accounting, business administration, finance, or public administration, at least five years' experience in accounting, budgeting, and finance, of which at least two years shall have been in the public sector. So it still strikes that. What's that? Okay, well, I already started talking about this one. So it still strikes that language for Finance Director, and then, yeah, they have in their memorandum, it's out of order. So that's the language striking from Finance Director still. And then the language striking from the Director of the Department of Public Works shall have a master's degree in architecture, business administration, community development, engineering, political science, or public administration, at least three years' experience in the administration of a Department of Public Works or contract administration, period. In lieu of a master's degree, the Director of the Department of Public Works may have a bachelor's degree and at least five years' experience working in a municipal Department of Public Works, during which time he shall have had administrative responsibilities. And then finally, in Deputy Director of Public Works, it strikes, "The Deputy Director of Department of Public Works shall have a bachelor's degree in architecture, business administration, community development, engineering, political science, or public administration, and at least three years' experience in the administration of a Department of Public Works or contract administration, period. In lieu of a bachelor's degree, comma, the Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works may have a high school diploma and at least 10 years' experience working in a municipal Department of Public Works, comma, of which five shall have had administrative responsibilities." So that's the original language anyway, so I just want to make sure the community knew. It would strike that language still, but this is the amendment that really just will make it so that what we're talking about reflects the administration's latest proposal. It adds this language. Under the Director of the Department of Public Works, it adds, "It is preferred for the Director of the Department of Public Works to have a bachelor's degree and/or a master's degree in engineering, public administration, or business administration, and at least 10 years' of experience in designing, engineering, servicing, and/or administering municipal, county, state, and/or federal public works, transportation, water, and/or sewer systems," period. For Deputy Director of Public Works, this amendment that's just been moved would add this language. "It is preferred for the Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works to have a bachelor's degree and/or a master's degree in engineering, public administration, or business administration, and at least 10 years' of experience in designing, engineering, servicing, and/or administering municipal, county, state, and/or federal public works, transportation, water, and/or sewer systems." And then for Finance Director, it adds this language. "It is preferred for the Finance Director to have a master's degree in accounting, business administration, finance, or public administration, and at least five years' experience in accounting, budgeting, and/or finance." So the amendment before us right now is really just adding this language, the bold language that council members have had in their packets. I would recommend that we adopt that amendment, and then we'll talk about the main item, where it's, do we strike it? Do we make that substitute? And Councilwoman Rutherford will be first on that speaker's list. Does that sound good? Are we clear that what's before us right now is, do we want to add that bold language that they have updated following last week's meeting? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the amendment before us, which adds the language that has just been stated, under 2192 Director, 2193 Deputy Director, and 288 Director. It adds that bolded language that was just stated. Clerk Doyle on that amendment.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Michael.
No.
No.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Four yays, three nays.
Did I vote?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Glad I was recorded. So that has been adopted, so the bold language is in there. So now we are at the main ordinance proposal, which would, again, strike that, shall have, and right now it's got the "it is preferred" approach. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
So because it says "it is preferred," that means they don't have to have a degree? Is that correct? Make it plain.
That answer is clearly yes.
Okay. All right, so we're basically dumbing this down. Correct? Because that's what this is. At the end of the day, whether we like it or love it, this is wrong, and what we're doing as Senator President, it's not going to just only affect what is happening now, but it's going to affect job applications for years to come, and I hope that you guys can sit with it and live with it, because that's exactly...
Order in the chambers. Councilwoman Rutherford, that's the floor.
That's exactly what y'all doing. Y'all telling people in the community, you don't have to have a degree. You're telling people in the community, you don't have to have qualifications. You're telling people in the community, it's not what you know, it's who you know, and it's the good old boys gang. That's it. That's it.
Mayor Grimal?
What this language would do is return the ordinance language to how it was before the emergency manager changed it. The language that's being deleted was added by emergency managers to serve the emergency manager's purpose, number one. Number two, what we're saying is that there are a lot of considerations to take into account when hiring somebody, not just their degree, but also their experience, and we're allowing both the executive branch and the legislative branch, council, to make that determination, because any appointment of directors has to be approved by city council.
Councilman Nicholson?
Yeah, I want to underline that point, that this body has the ability, when every time we have a director, a department director, they come, we put their resume out, the community gets the opportunity to hear about their experience, we get the opportunity to hear about their experience. If there was a director or deputy director that worked in this building for 30 years, or worked in any other building for 30 years, and has all of the qualifications, I can't imagine, my dad didn't get to go to college. My dad is incredibly qualified and could have sat in that seat, and owns a huge trucking company, knows all about what it takes to get that job done. But for the fact that he didn't have that opportunity when he was a child, but has worked hard for a city for 30 years, put in his sweat equity, and for people that, you know, have argued the opposite point to be yelling and clapping and saying yes, 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 is bewildering to me, but for the fact that we have, and I'm not talking about you, Melanie, no. The reality is that we have that ability. For us to be able to have the opportunity to hear about somebody's experience, we can all vote no every single time. So the good old boys club is not necessarily the fact in this situation. That could be the fact for the person that wants to hire them, but the fact that we have the ability to say no puts the power back in the people's hands.
I would like to propose an amendment that removes entirely from this proposal the Director of the Department of Finance, which would essentially make it so we're only talking about Public Works Director and Deputy Director. So my motion is that we remove 2-88 Director, that we would not be making any changes to the Finance Director position.
Support.
Excuse me. I thought we had already, though, approved that, removing, adding that language for all three.
I'll help us through it. So it's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Rutherford, that we remove the Finance Director consideration. So that what we did with the first amendment was that we just included the language that they've added to say "it is preferred, it is preferred, it is preferred." So I'm striking the whole kit and caboodle when it comes to Finance Director, essentially extracting the Finance Director so we're only talking about Public Works Director and Deputy Director. Does that make sense?
No, again, I'm not clear on what's going on, because I thought that the previous vote was for all three, that we would add the new language, and that what we're talking about now is the removal of the old language. So are you saying that you want to remove the Finance Director from this second part of not removing that old language?
I want to strike it completely, so it's not even new language, it's not even old language. It would stay the existing Finance Director language. So our first amendment that we just did added language to all three. I'm taking the third leg of that stool Finance Director and removing it from tonight's consideration, because, and so I can read it when this motion is before us, it would retain the existing Finance Director language. Our main ordinance would keep, because we wouldn't be changing it, we wouldn't be considering it.
Again, I'm confused, as a point of order, can we do that when we've already voted to add the new language? As a point of order, I mean, is that... Is that okay?
You could consider 10 or 12 amendments that further changes language, and ultimately the majority, you know, so ultimately the majority vote, and this amendment may not pass either. So it's just a matter of, I was hearing from council members, that they especially took issue with changes to the Finance Director language, so I want to, essentially, if this amendment carries, we'd just be talking about Director and Deputy Director for Public Works. Mayor Grimal?
I don't have a real objection to bifurcating the two issues. The only suggestion I would have is, from the administration's perspective, we're fine with all of the finance language, except we do think that there should be a little more flexibility than requiring that number of years of experience specifically in public finance or accounting as opposed to general finance. Our position is the administration.
I would ask the question, what municipalities in the state of Michigan do not require any years of municipal or public finance? And I imagine there are, but that would be a driving factor. Many finance directors in municipalities in the state of Michigan have a degree of, or a level of, I shouldn't use the D-word, a level of public or municipal financial background, and that, I think, is an asset, that a city of our size, that would be an asset because of the nuances of the different types.
We don't, we don't disagree about that. I'm not aware of any cities in Michigan that have any of this in city ordinance, and that's what we're talking about tonight. It's not about, and I made this point a week ago, too, that this isn't about what the qualifications for people should be, it's about whether it should be in the city's ordinance, whether it should have the force of law, as opposed to being based on hiring decisions that are up to the executive branch and the legislative branch. So if we're going to follow what other cities do, I think we should be deleting this language entirely, which was what we brought forward last week. But at a minimum, I don't think we want to put in city ordinance and have it have the force of law that someone has to have public finance experience. They might have lots of years of experience in the private sector, such that the executive branch and council, which would have to approve any appointment, believe that although they don't have a lot of public, or maybe any, public finance experience, they have sufficient experience overall that they still merit appointment.
The amendment before us is removing Finance Director from the equation. Any further deliberation? Or clarification? Okay, so the amendment before us is, do we strike any of the changes proposed for Finance Director and limit it, that would lead of it to just talking about Director of Department of Public Works and Director of Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works, it would essentially extract any changes to the Finance Director calculation? Is everyone clear on that? All right, that's the amendment before us. Roll call on adoption. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Five yays, two nays.
All right, that carries. So what we're looking at right now is the main motion as amended, and it would be an ordinance amendment, that this would be the new language for the Director of Public Works, and then the new language for the Deputy Director of Public Works. "There shall be a Director of the Department of Public Works," in parentheses, "DPW Director, whose appointment and compensation shall be in accord with the procedures provided for in the charter," period. "It is preferred for the Director of the Department of Public Works to have a bachelor's degree and/or a master's degree in engineering, public administration, or business administration, and at least 10 years' of experience in designing, engineering, servicing, and/or administering municipal, county, state, and/or federal public works, transportation, water, and/or sewer systems." And then next, 2-193 Deputy Director. If this passes, this would be the new language. "There may be a Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works, comma, whose appointment and compensation shall be in accord with the procedures provided for in the charter," period. "The Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works shall be considered the Chief Assistant Director of the Department of Public Works," period. "It is preferred for the Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works," with a K, "to have a bachelor's degree and/or a master's degree in engineering, comma, public administration, comma, or business administration, and at least 10 years' of experience in designing, comma, engineering, comma, servicing, comma, and/or administering municipal, comma, county, comma, state, comma, and/or federal public works, comma, transportation, comma, water, comma, and/or sewer systems," period. So that's based on how the amendments have shaken out so far. That's the ordinance change that is before us. Any further discussion or clarifications? Councilwoman James?
Yes, I'd like to ask administration, why 10, at least 10 years of experience? Because that does seem to me to be excessive. 10 years. Because it says at least 10. So, I mean, that's saying that the person that we're hiring would have to have a minimum of 10 years' experience, which in my mind would be excessive.
We're certainly open to less than that. We understood, or at least our understanding of some of the council discussion last week was a concern about reducing qualifications, and we thought we would offset that by expressly stating a preference for greater years of experience.
Well, let me just say, though, in today's, you know, in the market, with this language, you're cutting out any younger person, you know, who has had the educational background, probably a much more up-to-date understanding of engineering processes, and, but you're saying if that person has to have a minimum of 10 years, you're going to kick out a lot of younger people who would be qualified to do these jobs. I really think 10 years here is excessive, especially when the language says at least 10 years. I would support either moving, getting rid of the least, or just taking out, you know, putting a smaller number of years there. 10 is excessive.
Mayor Grimal, followed by Councilwoman Rutherford.
Again, we're very open to a council amendment to lessen that stated preference.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
So, I would, you said something earlier, Mayor, I want to piggyback off that, that we're changing the language because of the emergency management when he had those language things. But at the end of the day, it really is an issue for me, and I want to be clear. Be clear, first of all, I don't have a degree, so I don't hate people to have degrees. So that's not what this is about. It is about what is an impediment for the city, and because for the impediment of the city, we need to have quality people running these departments. In the past, the main issue has been we have not serviced the people well, because people have been appointed, people have been given opportunities, that they didn't have the right skill set, or as I have been told, the right temperament. Everybody, just because you worked a job for a long time, does not mean you have the capacity to be a director, and we have to be honest about that. And so, again, you know how I feel about it, but I want to be clear so that it is not projected... And so again, you know how I feel about it, but I want to be clear so that it is not projected, oh, she has a problem if a person doesn't have a degree. I can't because I don't have one. I have a problem when we don't have the quality people running these departments. That's all. Go ahead.
Councilman Nicholson?
I, I don't necessarily have a problem with the 10-year minimum for a director-level role. I think in a director-level role, I've been arguing for experience, so I certainly won't backpedal on that. I want to make a point to say that if we're going to adjust these, these expectations, we've seen what we have in the salary, in the applicant pool, and we've seen what our, our pay scales are. Some of these jobs are going to require at least a $50,000 raise. I, I mean, I'm looking at the MML right now, these are real job postings that are out there for finance director at $188,000 a year. That's more than double of what, you know, what we've paid in the past. So I just want to prepare the public for not feeling like all of a sudden, we're going to start hiring people in at these extreme salaries. These are the salaries. So while we can find someone who has experience, who have, who has, you know, that degree does, it really does catapult the requirement. Experience ticks you up the, the salary lane. It doesn't, it doesn't shoot you up the salary lane. So I, I want to make sure that people are prepared for, and I don't disagree with it. We've made that decision, that is, that is where it lies. But I, I, I hope that the administration is prepared to do those salary studies and get us back some adjustments and ask for those so we can start getting some quality candidates in the pipeline.
Anyone for a first time? Council, Mayor Grimal?
Well, I just want to acknowledge that we don't believe that experience alone means somebody has either the temperament or the abilities to be a director, but we also don't think that a degree alone means somebody has the temperament or the ability to do a job. All we're asking is for flexibility to take into account the applicant as a whole and not making it illegal to do so between the executive branch's discretion and the legislative branch's discretion. This is an ordinance. It is a law. And as I said last week, the issue isn't what qualifications we think people should have, it's whether it should be put in the city's ordinance. The other thing I would say, as I mentioned earlier tonight, and I think have, have mentioned in other settings, is I'm not aware of any other cities that put these sorts of items into city ordinance in general. Maybe if it's something where there's a state licensure required, like someone having a, being a licensed member of the state bar to be the city attorney, or something like that. But other than that, I'm not aware of any other municipality in the state that puts this sort of thing into law, into city ordinance.
Councilman Goodman for a first time, council, and then followed by councilman James for a second time.
So a lovely thing about being able to have a phone up here is being able to do quick research on the fly. So there, there's obviously a conversation around, between like a mixture of what's important to have in terms of education and experience. I have gone through in the span of five minutes, four different director of public work positions that have four different levels of experience required. There are some that require a bachelor's degree minimum in eight years. There is one that I'm currently looking at in New Hampshire that has a couple of different ways to, to measure that down, whether it be having a degree in civil engineering-related field plus eight years of experience, or related, related engineering operations, or any equivalent combination of education and experience in which demonstrates the possession of acquired knowledge, skills, and abilities. At a different ordinance, I can see a version that says having a master's, a bachelor's degree and years of experience, and then having the same caveat, or a combination of experience and education that demonstrates the necessary knowledge or skills for the job. So we can have a discussion as to what this looks like, but to the mayor's overall point, I think the point that many of us are making, like there is flexibility that other municipalities who pay dramatically more, and arguably cities that have much more difficult structures to manage, who are able to recognize and make some delineation between what is usable education and experience. I think we should also be able to do the same thing by being able to figure out, you know, what is, for our circumstance in that moment, the, the combination of education and experience that we need. And I think the important thing to remember is that inherently in how this works for us, we have to vote on these positions. So we will also be the ones deciding, not just the administration when they bring it to us, but we ourselves will be looking at this and saying, okay, while this person may have a bachelor's degree, they may have eight years' experience, or they may have an associate's, and they have these certifications, and then so many years of experience. We have that ability to look at that and analyze that. I just want to be able to call attention to our ability to do that.
Councilman Parker for a first time, then followed by councilman James for a second time.
You know, I've sit and heard all this, and we keep thinking that we, we, we are making that decision now, but that doesn't say we're going to be here four years from now, eight years from now, 10 years from now. And what we are doing now will establish what they get to do eight years from now, 10 years from now. I recall back in my youth that degrees was used to separate folks. I recall in my youth that if you didn't have one, it kept you from being able to be in positions. And so now we're, we're, we're going back, and I do recognize that some of us, because of who we know, get positions that we aren't qualified for, and can stay in them for 30 years because we protect some people from getting fired. And so basically, what we're saying is, you don't need a degree, and if you've been in it for 30 or 40 years, you have the qualifications to do it, and that's just, to me, is wrong. And so I just, I certainly respect the fact that, that we could put whatever we want to put into the charter, and maybe this issue need to go to the Charter Commission that's being, looking at the charter right now and being decided there, because it does not seem we're going to reach it, the decision that needs to be reached here. So it just disturbs me that we're even sitting here in 2023 discussing this issue about the qualifications to run a, they put as a major city in Michigan from a DPW perspective and potentially a finance perspective. Just disturbs me greatly. Thank you.
Councilman James?
Yeah, I, I want to state again that I, I don't think what we have before us lowers the qualifications for these positions. I think, I think this is, what we are trying to do is adjust this ordinance so that it really aligns with other, you know, what other cities are doing and gives us the flexibility. It does not lower the, the qualifications because these jobs, we do not post ordinances for jobs. We post job descriptions, and the, we still can clarify in our job postings what skills and qualifications we want to see in these positions. But I don't think, and I, I have to agree with administration, I do not think we need to have this level of detail in our ordinance. I certainly don't think the ordinance needs to say that we need to have someone with at least 10 years of experience. I, I don't think we need that level of detail in the ordinance. We may put that in our job description, we may put that in other areas in, in HR, but we don't need it in the ordinance. That's the issue for me. You know, it's, it's not that, the, the whole argument of you have to have a degree, we're going to allow people not to have a degree, is not really what the issue is. I, I, there's no argument that degrees are needed for these positions. There's no argument. I don't argue with that. I don't see this issue as really lowering the qualifications. I, I think, I think the issue is that we're trying to position ourselves as a city where we can make good decisions. We can't speak for the administration that's going to come after us. But I think if we attempt to do what is right today, hopefully they will do what is right tomorrow. We need to be able to have the flexibility to get people hired into the city. And that doesn't mean we lower our qualifications, but it does mean that we need to remove all of the obstacles that don't make sense. And it doesn't make sense for this level of detail to be in our ordinance. It doesn't make sense. This, this kind of detail should be in the job postings, and again, we have the ability to, we will be approving these positions as, as city council, so there is just no chance that people are going to be allowed into these positions who have no skills at all. But the question is, do we want all of this defined in our ordinance? And I don't think we do. I think we are tying our own hands unnecessarily, and I would like to see us, you know, go ahead and make this adjustment, because this is the ordinance. This is not the job description.
Councilman Rutherford?
Every vote and every decision that we make here affects the citizens of Pontiac. Every vote and every decision that we make here affects the future of Pontiac. And so my question is very simple, is this really what we doing? Because at the end of the day, I get it, we don't want people's hands to be tied, I get it, we want flexibility, but do we want temporarily, a temporal, temporary fix, or we want a long-term fix? And that's the real question. What are we doing? Because the seven people, seven of us, were voted here to vote in the best interest of the city of Pontiac and not ourselves, and not if we don't have a degree, and not if we don't have the experience, but knowing what is in the best interest of the city. And so my question is very simple, is this decision in the best interest of the city of Pontiac for five years, 10 years, or 20 years? If you can convince me that it is, I'll vote yes, but if you can't, I'm voting no. That's it.
President Pro Tim Carrington?
Yes, I thank everyone for both sides of this passionate argument, but I'd like to call for the vote, President.
There's a motion to call the question, which would end the speaker's list and move into voting. Is there a second? Support? Is there, Clerk Doyle, roll call on the motion to call the question, AKA end, end
Parker?
No.
Rutherford?
No.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Four yeas, three nays.
So parliamentary experts, is that enough of a vote to end the speaker's list? Or does that require?
Make sure that people knew what we were voting on just then.
Stated clearly, we were voting on ending debate. So speaker's list continues, Deputy Mayor Stevens. Any other speakers? Speaker's list is a.
Oh, not a speaker's, I was going to make a suggestion, but go ahead.
Do you like to be recognized next?
Oh, yes, thank you darling. Can we call to postpone this another week?
So you would like to make a motion to postpone for one week?
Yes.
All right, is there a second? That motion fails due to lack of a second.
No problem.
Hearing any other speakers? Hearing no other speakers, we now move to voting on the main motion, which is this ordinance amendment as amended. So everyone's clear, if you vote yes, you are saying you want this language for DPW director and deputy director to be as stated and as written. If you vote no, the existing ordinance language remains the same. Sound good?
Yes, sound good.
Capisce, all right. So speaker's exhausted, we now move to roll call vote on the proposed ordinance amendment, which is the new language for the Department of Public Works director and deputy director. Clerk Doyle?
Rutherford?
Nope.
Carrington?
Uh, no.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Four yeas, three nays.
Is that a sufficient vote threshold for the ordinance amendment to be passed?
Yes.
All right, so the motion carries, the ordinance amendment as amended has passed. We are now at the second reading of our next ordinance amendment. This is about 2360. It removes the prohibition of adult-use marijuana businesses. So right now, the city ordinance language has it where it's specifically stated that there's a prohibition on adult-use marijuana businesses in Pontiac, and that's been in ordinance for a few years. As we discussed last week, the interest is from multiple council members that that be lifted, so that way we can do the next step of, okay, how will that be implemented for the city of Pontiac? I think that many residents of the city of Pontiac in the last four years have definitely progressed in terms of their views on adult-use marijuana and the legalization of that, that industry in our city. Over the last few years, the world has changed, the economy has changed, and I think adults' attitudes toward adult-use marijuana have evolved as well. So if this ordinance amendment though does not get passed, then any ordinance implementation is rendered moot for the, the barricades still remain in place. So Mayor Administration, would you like the city's attorney to take it from here to explain the context for the community and the council?
That would be great, Mr. President, and I'll allow the attorney as well to explain a proposed amendment that's designed to ensure that people don't just sit on licenses without using them.
There we go. Well, good evening, Joe Colani from the law firm Clark Hill on behalf of the city. With respect to the second reading of the ordinance before you, I mentioned last week that we should, that it's, it's imperative that we have the effective date. If this passes tonight, the effective date should coincide with the adoption, an effective date of the adult-use marijuana business ordinance that is also up tonight for a second reading. So it's important for a couple of reasons. We, this is removing the prohibition, and without having the prohibition, or with, with the prohibition, you can't have the adult-use marijuana ordinance. But if you pass this before the adult-use ordinance is adopted, you're running, you may run into some licensing issues or permitting issues, and that's very important. So the effective date, I would ask that you consider a, an amendment to this ordinance to provide an effective date that's consistent with the effective date of the adult-use marijuana ordinance, meaning this should not become effective unless and until the adult-use marijuana business ordinance has been adopted by the city.
Thank you. First on the speaker's list, Councilman Nicholson, sounds like he has a question.
Do you have a recommendation? So the, the dates, there is a date listed for the, the enacting of the adult use, or?
Yes, there is.
Okay, and that date, what is that date?
That effective date reads as follows, Commissioner Nicholson. The ordinance shall become effective, A, 30 days following the date of adoption, B, the effective date of the amendment to ordinance 2360, removing the prohibition of marijuana establishments, or C, the effective date of the zoning code text amendments permitting adult-use marijuana business land uses, whichever is later. So the idea is there's three things that we are working on that need to coincide. So this particular ordinance, what I would suggest for the repeal of the prohibition against adult-use ordinances, I would suggest recommending amendment that's section 86 dash 120, the effect, and call it effective date, and that this should read as follows. This ordinance shall be, shall become effective, A, 30 days following the adoption of, of its adoption, or B, the effective date of the adoption of the city's proposed adult-use marijuana business ordinance, whichever is later.
Are there others on the speaker's list? I'll make that amendment.
It has been moved by Councilman Nicholson that the ordinance amendment 2360 before us, that there'd be a section 86 dash 120 effective date. The language has just been read. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson to add that language, and it's been sected by Councilman Goodman. So now we're at that amendment. And what this amendment does, it's, it's adding language that doesn't currently exist that talks about effective, when it goes into an effect, when, when it is live. And so it would be live if this amendment passes, once the other pieces of the puzzle fall into place with the, the creation of a pathway for adult-use marijuana businesses in the city of Pontiac. Is that clear? So again, this particular amendment is. So again, this particular amendment is specifically adding the effective date that makes it so that it gives that time window for all of the pieces of the puzzle to fall into place and that all the safeguards are in place as well. Councilman Parker?
Let I maintain what level of understanding I have. We're, we're adding language that's not here.
Precisely. An effective date.
That affects the effective date. We added what he read, but it's not here.
Correct. It mirrors the language that we have on page 43 of the next ordinance that we'll consider. But it is not explicitly written. It has been verbally stated, and we could have him state it again for you and the community's benefit.
Which package is that in that was given to us? Second reading? Okay.
So you could see in, underlined and read the language about effective date, that an amendment that we have already done for the adult-use marijuana businesses. So we'd be mirroring that same language that would include the same. Mr. Attorney, would you like to restate that?
Yes, I'm sorry. You have the floor.
Well, Pro Tem said it was on page 43. Is that on the one that was in the packet or the one we got handed when we got here?
The one was handed, second reading, page 40.
Well, the second reading was in the packet.
It may also be there.
And then we got these packets when we got here. So just keep me straight. I'm just asking.
Clerk Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Clarify what you have. You have a clean version of the ordinance with the latest amendments that were approved last week that was in your packet. Then in addition to that, you have what's labeled second reading, the red line, actual changes, and then this omnibus version, which I believe the other attorney, Mr. Murphy, will speak to when you get to that agenda item.
So just because it has red, it's easier to find the changes?
I just need to know which packet it was used in. That's all.
Councilman Goodman, Councilwoman James.
Yes, I, I just want to ask that as we talk about it, that you let us know where we need to go.
Yeah.
Because it gets confusing.
So we are talking about an amendment to the ordinance 2360 to remove the prohibition of adult-use marijuana businesses. The language that exists is what's in your original packets and which was circulated. But the amendment language that's now before us is about the effective date. And it's using mirrored language that you can find on page 43, the last few words on the second reading hard copy that's been handed to you. So that way, it shows the changes in red. Mr. Attorney, could you please restate for the community the amendment language before us?
Yes, I will do that. Section 86-120, effective date, period. This amendment shall become effective, A, 30 days following its adoption; or B, the effective date of the adoption of the city's proposed adult-use marijuana business ordinance, whichever is later.
All right. So that's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman. Clerk Doyle.
And this is a question for the attorney. Shouldn't be this ordinance, because when, if they approve this ordinance, it gets another ordinance number, as opposed to, I think you said this amendment.
86-120?
This ordinance.
From a standpoint, from your organization's standpoint, I, whatever you want in terms of the, the number, yes.
Yeah, so if it's, would say instead, this ordinance shall become effective, A, 30 days following the date of adoption; or B, the effective date of the zoning in code.
This one is not required to be effective for the zoning.
Okay.
We, we only need to do either 30 days after adoption or adoption of the adult-use marijuana business ordinance, whichever is later. Just the two.
Mr. Attorney, restate the amendment.
Sure. Section 86-120, effective date. This ordinance shall become effective, A, 30 days following its adoption; or B, the effective date of the adoption of the city's proposed adult-use marijuana business ordinance, whichever is later.
Mr. Nicholson, does that still reflect your motion?
Yes, so moved.
Councilman Goodman, do you still second?
Support.
Is there any clarification on that particular amendment, adding the effective date language? All right. Roll call on adoption of this amendment for adding the effective date language. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Abstain.
Six yeas, one abstention.
That motion carries. The amendment is now incorporated into the main ordinance amendment for us. So back to the substance of it. Does this council want to remove the prohibition of adult-use marijuana businesses? Do we believe that's in the best interest for the city and citizens of Pontiac? I want to hear your policy feedback. You know, we always want to make sure the language is tight and right. But in terms of what it gets to, it would remove the limit or the banning, if you will, of adult-use marijuana businesses in the city of Pontiac. Any feedback or discussion from this body? Councilman Nicholson?
We voted in one of our first sessions unanimously for a resolution asking the mayor for this language. So I think at this point, it's just to say, hey, we got there. And thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speaker's list is exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the amendment to ordinance 2360 to remove the prohibition of adult-use marijuana businesses. Clerk Doyle.
So, Mr. President, since we did previously, the move in support was for the first reading, if we could actually do a move in support for the adoption of the ordinance.
All right. So we, last week, we had a move in a second that made the, the first reading red. And now we're going to, is there a motion to adopt an amendment to ordinance 2360, remove the prohibition of adult-use marijuana businesses?
So moved.
Support.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson for the adoption of the amendment to ordinance 2360. So now that motion is before us. And to keep it clean and tidy, since we did not have a motion before us a few minutes ago, Mr. Attorney, please restate the effective date. We're going to revote on that. Councilman Nicholson, do you still wish to amend the ordinance to add the effective date language?
So moved as amended.
Is there a second, Councilman Goodman?
Move by Carrington.
Well, mirroring the previous move in second. It's still seconded by Councilman Goodman. And to restate for the record the effective date language, Mr. Attorney?
Yes. Section 86-120, effective date, period. This ordinance shall become effective, A, 30 days following its adoption; or B, the effective date of the adoption of the city's proposed adult-use marijuana business ordinance, comma, whichever is later.
All right. Roll call again on the adding of that effective date language now that we have the main motion before us. Keeping it neat and tidy, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford? Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, one abstention.
That motion carries. That amendment language is there, very much so. So now we're at the main motion, adoption of an amendment to ordinance 2360 to remove the prohibition of adult-use marijuana businesses. We discussed it at length. Is there any final discussion? Hearing nothing further, we are now, have our roll call vote on adoption of amendment to ordinance 2360 to remove the prohibition of adult-use marijuana businesses. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Abstain.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yeas, one abstention.
That motion carries. The ordinance amendment is adopted, and the ordinance pending the effective date is hereby the law of the city. Now we are at adoption of the city of Pontiac adult-use marijuana business ordinance. First housekeeping item, Clerk Doyle, should we have another move in support? All right. So this is just so that we, we're making sure we're ironclad with our, our multiple readings, which our ordinance requires. Is there a motion for adoption of the city of Pontiac adult-use marijuana business ordinance?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman for adoption of the city of Pontiac adult-use marijuana business ordinance, which this has been read multiple times. And so now it's before us. So the discussion continues. We want to make sure after the many amendments considered last week and the many amendments considered the week before, that the council and the community have the opportunity to look at it comprehensively with those changes incorporated. Now the deliberation continues, and we may consider additional final amendments. But I think that we have had thorough and exhaustive research, review, debate, amendments, that we are in a position, if it's the will of this body, that we can have a, a final decision this evening. Before we begin considering a, a few final amendments, Mayor, are you comfortable with the, the city attorneys giving us a, a summary update on where we stand on the process? Okay. So gentlemen, if you could, anything you'd like us to know before we launch into our final deliberations, final speaker's list on this matter? We know of at least one amendment that was born out of past week's deliberations, and we have that language before us. So you can, you can open that, but you can also open more broadly. Where do we stand in the process? And what would you like this council and the community to know?
Thank you, Chairman McGinnis. The mayor has asked us to prepare an amendment to one of the sections involving the renewals portion of the application for renewal of the annual permit. There are a number of, of sections that are numbered one through 10. This would add 11. And that amendment, I believe, was presented to you before tonight's meeting. And it should be before you. I can read it if you would like us to read it.
Well, we can cross that bridge if there is a motion in a second. But we do, we do have the hard copy of that, and we'll make sure we're clear discussing it. But if you could?
Yeah, it pertains to the, the situation where we want to make sure that businesses that do end up receiving a permit from the city, and each year they're required to annually submit an application to renew that permit. And one of the conditions is to make sure that the business is a carry-on business, so that it's not someone holding on to a business and not moving forward with it. And, and we've addressed that in the proposed amendment.
Thank you. Anything more broadly, Mr. Murphy, that you'd like the city council and this administration to know about where we are more broadly with the process?
Yes, good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor and the clerk. The first thing would be on the second reading red line on page 27, paragraph, subparaphrase 10. There's some language that needs to be deleted to clarify the intent of that section. It ends as registered with the city for one year or more. It continues before the submittal of the application under the, this ordinance. We're suggesting that that last phrase be deleted before the submittal of the application under this ordinance. And that's, that's in the second reading red line from the amendments that were adopted last week. In addition, the omnibus red line amendment was an attempt to clean up matters that needed to be clarified or corrected based on the amendments that have been adopted in the last couple of council sessions. Some of, some of them are simple grammatical corrections. Do you want me to go through all of them or just the more substantive ones? For example, reciting the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, it had a "the" before Marijuana Act, which is, which is not the correct title of MIRMA. That's an example of the minor ones, but I can go through the more substantive ones. They're all redlined on your copy. Starting on page five, there's a, a reference to the application definition, changing the word license to permit because under our ordinance, we're referring to the city permit in distinction from the state license. So the person, the applicants are applying for a city permit as opposed to a license.
So let me just stop you right there. Mr. Clerk, if you can help us, the motion that we have before us for the adoption of the city of Pontiac adult-use marijuana business ordinance, is there anything procedurally we need to do to reflect the changes that are in the omnibus version as provided? The motion of councilmen Nicholson and Goodman is for this omnibus as the second reading. But do you feel clear and concrete that we are all on solid ground as it relates to this? Or should we make these changes as amendments in and of themselves?
I think so, because I was under the impression that you were doing the second reading on all the amendments that you had taken action on the prior week, which would not be inclusive of the omnibus version.
So, thank you. So we're all on the same understanding, is that all the amendments that have been made and are reflected in our second reading document, that's baked into the cake. So what we'll need, Mr. Murphy, is we can, if you'd like to identify all of these essentially structural and grammatical minor changes, and we will see if there is a motion to comprehensively make those, make that as one amendment. Do you feel comfortable with that, Clerk Doyle?
I do. With the only thing, I noticed this one does not have section numbers.
Okay.
That we actually will before the ordinance, if it is approved, it definitely needs to have section numbers actually added to it.
And legally speaking, when is that required in the process?
It would be required in the application process, definitely. Like previously, people, you know, labeled their sections, section 8C16 or something.
Oh, no. I mean, procedurally for the city council, is that a necessity for us adopting the ordinance amendment?
Yeah, I, I think for, for publishing purposes and all that, before you actually adopt it, it needs to be in the version. But the attorney can speak to it.
My understanding is the publishing company that does the, the coding, we've, they will often assign the numbers based on, so that we don't have duplication, correct?
Right.
So there's been no connection with the publishing company as to what numbers should be assigned to each of these sections. Before, go ahead.
No, no, no. Actually, they use our section numbers to make sure that there's like no duplication when they put it into the code, in the municipal code.
Okay, that's, I, I'm sorry, but we'll, we'll, we'll put the code numbers in ourselves. Because it would have to be a new chapter and a new, and that chapter then corresponds to the, the type of code. So in the case of like the medical marijuana, it's chapter, I think it's chapter 30, and then it goes through those numbers.
No, they put that in, but I'm saying they use these section numbers. So if this first, if the title was section one, and then purpose and intent, section two, then they use that, and they put it into the code.
That's, that's what I thought. I think we're saying the same thing.
Okay. So we just, I'm just saying we need actual section numbers on here.
Okay. So we just need one, two, three, four, five. All right. We can do that.
I'm going to do this. It's already been identified, an amendment that's recommended on page 27, number 10. It has been legally advised that we strike the statement that ends the first sentence before the submittal of the application under this ordinance. Is there such a motion to amend?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay.
I just have a question. Which, which section are we dealing with right now?
Page 27?
Of the second reading, the omnibus reading. The second reading, thank you.
Page 27 of the second reading, it spells out all the different, in the marijuana business permit application process, excuse me. Yes, that's right. Under letter F, there are 13 categories that spell out the points. And so in cat, item 10, or category 10, we, what the amendment before us strikes before the submittal of the application under this ordinance. So it would end with as registered with the city for one year or more, period. So it would end with as registered with the city for one year or more, period. Any clarification on that housekeeping amendment?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, so unclear. You're striking what?
At the end of the first sentence, on page 27 of the second reading, after it says "one year or more," the language continues before the submittal of the application under this ordinance, period. So, the proposed amendment before us strikes before the submittal of the application under this ordinance. Everyone else clear?
Yeah. I've got a...
Councilman James.
I have a couple more on page five of the original.
We'll want to vote on this one, though.
You're going to vote on that one?
So, anything else on this?
Okay.
So I'm, I don't want to let us get too far away with this, since it's straightforward and it's been identified, and it sounds like there's a consensus on it. Any further discussion on page 27 of the second reading? And do you want to give us the rationale for what, how that helps it make it tidier?
I was trying to avoid confusion as to what the intent of that amendment was last week, which was that we're seeking to award points for an applicant that's rehabilitated or redeveloped within three years before submittal of the application of the ordinance, or will rehabilitate in the future by rebuilding or completely renovating a building that's been vacant, or had been vacant as registered with the city for one year or more. That last phrase, we're seeking to delete because we think it creates some ambiguity where the intent was to award points based on that, without that last phrase.
This was my amendment, the intent was to start the clock, where the clock started, but I think without the phrase, it does the same, and it may be a little more succinctly.
Correct. Any further discussion or clarification? All right, so what's before us is the specific amendment on page 27 of the second reading, language, letter F, item 10, striking the phrase before the submittal of the application under this ordinance. Here, no further discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Okay.
Harrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeas, one extension.
Now, we're going to look at the omnibus version, so that Mr. Murphy can go through and identify the small tweaks that make it cleaner and tidier. We may want to, as annoying as it may be, do them change by change. Clerk Doyle, do you have a preference? Would you like us to do an all-in, or a change by change?
It'd be easier if they're all.
Okay. All right. Yep.
The more you go, the more I'm confused I'm getting. If I look at the packet that we got earlier, before the council meeting, that packet had 39 pages. The second reading, this section that we're talking about today, has 43 pages. The omnibus has 40 pages, and I'm trying to figure out whatever happened to the, if we do the second, we happen three pages of it in the omnibus.
It might be a little bit longer because of the fact that it's a red line, so that usually makes it longer than what the clean copy was.
So the omnibus is a clean copy?
No, the omnibus is a, a red line with suggested amendments.
So, what's in the packet is the second reading, but it is black and white, which makes it harder for you, me, and our eyeballs. So we have our second reading, but with red line, that's pulled out, plucked out, so that way it's helpful for us to see the changes better. This final document that the attorneys have provided is the omnibus, that has these final tweaks they were recommending to us. And so what we get to decide now is, do we want these final "the's" and "from's" and "whereas's"? We could do them spelling change by spelling change, or we could do it all-in, where they will go through and state for us from the omnibus, all these small changes. But Mayor Grimaldi, your hand is next.
Yeah, well, I, that certainly sums it up, President McGinnis, quite well, but just a further point of clarification for Pastor Councilman Parker, because it took me a while to figure out what was what in these documents that were sent over today as well. The second reading document includes all of the amendments that have already been approved by council. The omnibus adds in additional proposed amendments that council would need to vote on this evening. And that's why it's a little bit longer than the second reading. They're both redlined, but the second reading contains just the amendments already approved by council, whereas the omnibus document includes those, plus additional proposed amendments to be voted on this evening. Is that accurate, counsel?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
But according to what I've seen, the second reading, and I didn't, I know I wear glasses, but the second reading has 43 pages. The omnibus has 40. And if that adds additional stuff to it, then I would think it would be longer than the second reading.
I, I could explain that. There were deletions made from the, there were strike-throughs made that are in the red line of the second reading. Then we created a clean copy, which reduced the size down, accepting all the changes that the council's already adapted. The omnibus red line basically works off the clean copy and makes suggested amendments to clean up the ordinance. For example, it gives the total number of scoring points an applicant can achieve, whereas previously the draft was blank, as the total number of points. Those are some of the changes that are in the omnibus red line amendment.
To expand on that further, because it's a valid question, on page 35 of the second reading, for example, more than half that page is, we amended, through the amendments we've done in the last few weeks, it's striking out language. We voted to remove language. So the omnibus version, it no longer has that removed language, if that makes sense.
Okay.
But you can flip through the next page, 36, about a third of that page, we struck it. There are some new language added, but more, more was removed than added.
So my second question then would be, if this corrected this, why did you give me this?
Because we want to be explicit with, the votes of the amendments are what stands. So the second reading is what stands right now. The omnibus is the additional changes that are being sought. But I think you can understand where we're coming from. So what I need from the council to know is, do you want all the grammatical and, and final changes, item by item, or you want them in one fell swoop?
I would say let's go over them all, let's go over them, and then we can decide if we're going to do one swoop or two.
Okay, so we're looking at the omnibus, because that is what the city's attorneys have prepared as the, the final changes that they recommend legally to make it a stronger ordinance. So, Mr. Murphy, looking at the omnibus, we're at page one. Every change that he'll call out, red is the magic color.
And there's also a marking on the left-hand column, which will point you to the line where the change was made. So on page one, the only change was deleting the "the" in the title of the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. It shouldn't say "The Marijuana Act," it should just say Marijuana Act. That's the correct title for that statute. Page two.
Page one still.
Page one's still, I got a change.
The two changes are the same, they're just in two spots.
Then on page two, paragraph B, sub-paragraph one, in that second from last line of that paragraph, I added a "from," a "from" to, "from prosecution," or "from having their property seized by federal law enforcement authorities." The next red line change is on page five.
You moved, removed a phantom space in page three.
Correct. Some of those markings on the left-hand column are just closing up spaces. Page five, the definition of application, we changed the word license to permit, because that's the wording the ordinance uses for the city permit. Page six, under equivalent license, MMFLA, which stands for the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, was not a defined term in the ordinance, so the first reference to the MMFLA, we added the official statutory title and the citation, so it's a defined term for the rest of the way through the ordinance. Then on page 10, I believe. 10, in the section on Marijuana Business Rules and Regulations, sub-paragraph C, we made the word retailer establishment plural, so that it's consistent with the use of those terms in that subsection. The original draft had it as a singular. Next, on 13. 13 was an amended amendment suggested by the clerk in a discussion we had earlier today about allowing the application form to suggest how the applications will be submitted. The current draft says one printed and one electronic copy. The clerk indicated at some point, we may want to have more than one printed copy, and he wanted the flexibility in the application form, once the team has put together, to determine how many copies should be submitted by the applicants. Then, near the bottom of the page, in the final sub-paragraph B, if the applicant is disclosing information about their business and where they're organized, the original draft approved, just referred to the state of Michigan, the additional phrase refers to, or other state or foreign jurisdiction, since you might have entities applying who are organized in Delaware or Arizona, for example. Then on page 14, that's the reference to social equity applicants, having 51% or more ownership by qualifying applicants. I modified that to reflect that it's a qualifying social equity applicant, since they have to get that status from the state as part of the process in applying for a social equity retailer application. I think the next significant change is on 18. Sub-paragraph 25 addresses sanitation plans. And the amendment is that, in the application with the sanitation plan, they shall include a copy of a proposed contract or letter of intent, as opposed to a copy of a contract, since, until there's an award made, the contract wouldn't be entered, so this is more of a proposal or a letter of intent. Then on sub-paragraph 27, oh, on, sub-paragraph 26, change the word compliant to compliance with the requirements of the department. Sub-paragraph 27 clarifies what type of proof of insurance would be required. As opposed to proof of an insurance policy, it now states proof of financial responsibility in the form of a commitment or letter of intent to issue an insurance policy. The next significant change is on, well, it's a minor change on 20, sub-paragraph C, simply adding "a" before "grower." Then on 22, that's the first proposed scoring category with respect to the organization of the application. We wanted to make it clear, and this was something the clerk requested, that there be clear and accurate labeling of all required items, and that the failure to clearly and accurately label and organize the application materials will result in a deduction of points. Next, on 23, there are just some minor grammatical corrections. Then on 24, sub-paragraph nine, to be complete, we added "social equity retailer" to that second from last sentence. And then in sub-paragraph 10, that's the amendment that was already approved earlier tonight, which will be stricken from that, before the submittal of the application under And on page 25, sub-paragraph G, that's simply, I added up the total number of points and put in the total in that subsection, so an applicant can get anywhere from zero up to 165 points. Sub-paragraph H, council previously amended the total of retailer establishments from 20 down to 15. This paragraph still had the 20 in it, so that was modified to reflect the earlier amendment to the number or limit that is allowed. Similarly, on page 26, sub-paragraph I, that refers to Class A microbusinesses, and originally there were three, council amended that to allow five as a limit, and so that amendment just makes it more consistent with the limitation provision, reflecting that there's five. Same thing on page 27, social equity retailer establishments. Originally, it was four, the limit was amended to five, and this cleans that up for this Then on 28, which are the section addressing social equity retailers, sub-paragraph B just clarifies that social equity applicants for social equity retailer permits may apply for other available adult use permits. On page 30, that's the section on social equity. The original language was adult use recreational marijuana businesses should use good faith efforts in hiring 25%. It said employees, so the suggested amendment is to hire and retain 25% of its employees who are low-income or live in the city of Pontiac. 31, on designated consumption establishments, I thought it would be clearer if that last phrase was deleted in sub-paragraph A, except where otherwise detailed in the ordinance. That's a provision that basically provides the designated consumption establishments shall comply with all applicable requirements under the zoning ordinance. Then on 32, I think 30, 32 was just spacing corrections. 33, on permits generally, sub-paragraph...
Spacing issues on 32 as well as the striking of the word "and," yes.
Oh, I see it, I missed that. Poor vision. The title for transfer of location prohibited, transfer of and ownership, the "and" was deleted, so it reads properly. Then on page 33, for sub-paragraph B, on permits generally, this deals with the fact that final site plan approval has been approved by the planning commission. The planning commission also has to approve a special land use as part of that process, so "and" special land use was... So, "and" special land use was added to make it conform to how your site plan process is already set up. The, under term of marijuana business permit, each permit for that current year, that phrase would just move from the end of the sentence, so that it reads more logically, each permit for that current year shall be displayed in a conspicuous spot. And under, on page 34, sub-paragraph D, right at the top, the first paragraph, again, that corrects the term license to permit.
And then page 33, "and" is also struck previously.
Well, that's right. City code, comma, strike "and," Myrtma, and the rules. After 34, on 35-
Also makes on 34, "complies" instead of "complied."
Oh, that's right. I missed that. It's a little darker up here, when I'm looking at these pages. 35, as part of the application requirements, there's this proof of insurance requirement, but in terms of the renewal, there was nothing in the renewal process where the applicant seeking renewal would present evidence that it has financial responsibility in the form of an insurance policy. So, that basically takes the same language in the application section and sticks it into the renewal requirement. So, that's a more substantive change, but we thought it'd be important for the council to consider that when a applicant is seeking renewal, they also present proof that they have the required insurance, which names the city as an additional insured. And again, that language is the same as what's in the application section as a proof of Then on page 37, again, on sub-paragraph seven, social equity retailer was not in that section, and it needed to be added. And then, we, I corrected the term for designated consumption establishment and eliminated the word lounge. And the last page, where there are changes on 38-
We also have on 37 adding, yeah, or emailed at the bottom.
Oh, that's right. Sub-paragraph C, Clerk Doyle pointed out that typically, the clerk's office emails notifications when there's an appeal issue or involving an application or denial of renewal or revocation or suspension. The original draft just said mail. And then on page 38, sub-paragraph D, again, that adds social equity retailer to that paragraph, because that's one of the limited licenses permitted. It also corrected the use of the term designated consumption establishment as opposed to lounge. And then, sub-paragraph E, originally, the clerk was required to notify the Cannabis Regulatory Agency of all renewal applications which are renewed or denied. That process, though, there can be a suspension or revocation, and so, the suggested paragraph is that if a permit is suspended or revoked, the clerk shall also notify the Cannabis Regulatory Agency. Then under the section on penalties, temporary suspension of permit, I added the term after this ordinance or state law and rules, and then also added the term suspension or revocation, because the original draft just said permit revocation, but the suspension obviously is a different type of penalty. So, I thought it was important to add that. Those are all of the red line changes in this omnibus draft.
Is there a motion to amend the ordinance language to incorporate these omnibus changes?
Support by Carrington.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. Many of these are very minor, but I do think it might call upon us, especially with the section numbers issued to resolve, that it might be that we'll want to have a final clean copy next week. And I know that's a buzzkill for some, but that it, there's a lot of moving parts with these. But, it's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Carrington, that we incorporate the multitude of language changes that has just been identified by Attorney Murphy. Any questions or concerns about the substance of any of them? As we went through fine-tooth comb, they seemed very logical, adding words where the intent of us was to have that word regardless, or make it map with the other language. But, what we have before us is specifically the redlined omnibus changes before us. Any questions or debate? Clarifications needed? Do you feel comfortable, Clerk Doyle, on the amendment motion before us? Okay. So, speakers, this exhausted. We are now at roll call on adoption of these, of these language updates of the amendments to the text that have just been explicitly identified. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment passes, and so, the language of the ordinance, proposed ordinance is amended accordingly. So, the next item on the, the next agent, the next amendment up to bat would be the amendment that the mayor has, mayor's office has requested about speaking to minimum hours of operation. And so, the language that is before us, it's in the section of the annual marijuana business permit renewal, it would be in number 11, or I should say, sub, under E, number 11. The language in red reads, unless the applicant shows good cause, comma, the applicant shall demonstrate to the city clerk that the applicant was open and conducting business for a minimum of 20, 20, hours per week during each and every week of the prior year, period. The term, quotation, good cause, end quotation, shall mean substantial grounds, comma, such as an emergency, comma, fire damage, comma, or other unforeseeable circumstances that prevented the applicant from conducting business for a minimum of 20, 20, hours per week during each and every week of the prior year, period. Economic or financial decisions, comma, or inability to secure capital or financial resources that prevented an applicant from conducting business for a minimum of 20, 20, hours per week during the prior year shall not be good cause, period. So, that language was before all of us, but I wanted to read it, so that way, the community heard it as well. Is there a motion-
Move by Carrington.
Support.
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington and seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we make that language addition under the annual marijuana business permit renewal, letter E, subcategory, a new subcategory, number 11. So, the mayor asked for this language, in part to make sure that we don't have any sort of dormant licenses out there, or any dormant sort of zombie-type situations. Does the city's attorneys like to elaborate further on the framework or rationale?
Obviously, there is a concern, it's been expressed previously, that the medical applicants have been kind of sitting back, waiting to see what happens with recreational. So, there was a desire that that not occur during the recreational process if someone's There are situations that I've witnessed in the past in other cities where applicants promise the moon and get high scores, but then, for some reason, they don't have the capital to open up, and they have a license, and it's not fair to the other applicants who didn't score as well, and it's not fair to the city if, if the business is not operating. So, this section is our proposed amendment, seeks to avoid that situation and give the city some remedy if, if there's an unused dormant license that's sitting, sitting there.
Thank you. And I know other council members expressed this similar interest. We have this amendment before us that adds this new language to try and codify in there in terms of minimum hours of operation when those annual renewals happen. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, speakers, this exhausted. Roll call on adoption of that amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is adopted, and therefore, agenda, the amendment is adopted, and therefore, the ordinance language is changed accordingly. I have one final amendment that I'm aware of, but are there other amendments that council members wish to have considered tonight? And are the attorneys aware of other sort of loose ends that we have not yet tied in a pretty-
We are not.
Okay. Councilwoman James, did you have one that you were marinating on?
I had, in reading through it today, I'm not sure where it would be in terms of your omnibus or your second reading, but in the council packet on page five, number eight, it says bylaws and by, bylaws and their spouses, which needs to be reworded. It should, should say, should be all individuals and, and their spouses with membership or shareholder rights in accordance with the Articles of the Corporation or the bylaws. And I'm not sure where that's at. It's page five, page five, number eight.
Good eye.
For a nonprofit corporation? Is that the sub-paragraph you're looking at?
Well, I just wrote notes, so I'm not sure where it's, where it's at in there.
I think that's wrong. It just needs to be taken down there.
So, in our second reading, you'll find it on page five, number eight. So, what it is right now, it's under definitions, it's saying what applicant means. And there are nine different examples of, excuse me, who an applicant is, and this looks like there's a, some phantom phrase in there in number eight, after the word bylaws and their spouses. It probably just unintentionally got mapped over from number six, which talks about six and five and four, et cetera, and three that talks about and their spouses. So, based on the, on the slide, would you concur that in eight, we would want to strike and their spouses?
Well, you need to move it.
Okay.
You need to move it ahead of, just say, all individuals and their spouses, and then continue your sten, your sentence. And entities with membership or shareholder rights. And then, the same is for nine. Nine is spouses is out of place, so you want to move it further ahead in your sentence.
Okay.
Would you concur?
I would.
Okay. On page 10, item C, it simply says department, and I just need to clarify, what department are we talking about? Is that a city department or state department? Because it just gives, gives the word department, and I'm not clear on what, what they're talking about there.
Sure. Councilwoman, the, that's a defined term in the definitions, and it stands for the-
Okay.
LARA and the Cannabis Regulatory Agency.
Okay. All right. Okay. On page 19, item 29, I, I've got a concern about the language here relative to parks. It says a scale-location-area map that identifies the relative locations of and distances from schools, childcare centers, public parks containing playground equipment, which concerns me, and religious institutions as measured along the center line of the street or streets of address between the two fixed points on the center line determined by projecting straight lines at right angles to the center line from the primary point of ingress to the school, childcare center, or religious institution, or for a public park from the playground equipment nearest to the contemplated location and from the primary point of ingress to the contemplated location. That's a lot of language. And I'm concerned there, I would hope that no park in this city should be limited in making necessary upgrades to that park, because, you know, it doesn't, it's going to compromise the, these issues with, with these facilities. So, this is an issue. And it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be addressed in this ordinance, but it definitely has to be addressed, because otherwise, this could compromise our plans to develop and upgrades city parks in this city.
Well, in terms of the playground equipment, you're suggesting you want that deleted.
Well, I'm suggesting that, you know, the way this is worded, I'm concerned that people are going to be moving out playground. In fact, it has happened in this city, that at JC Park, there was a swing set that disappeared, and nobody seems to know who authorized to have it removed. I'm concerned that this could compromise our work to upgrade our parks, because this is a lot of, a lot of language here. And it's going to be important for these businesses to be so far away from these entities and from the, you know, the center line where it's, it's actually saying, they need to be so far from a designated piece of play equipment, which could compromise, if you want to upgrade that park and put play equipment based on just the demographics of the park, this language is problematic for that. So, I'm, I, you know, I don't know how we're going to address that. I don't think, again, that it has to be addressed through this ordinance, but I think we definitely need to give our parks protection against this ordinance. The language of, of this particular ordinance item.
Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilman Nicholson?
I, I produce. Somebody's got to, oh. Well, use somebody else. So, what I was going to ask is, in, in reading that, I think, and I could be wrong, but I think that that section is just saying what needs to be included in the application. And what needs to be included in the application is all of that detail, so that a decision can be made. I don't think that's actually, I, I agree with your sentiment, but I don't think that's the actual line that says things can or cannot be. I think that's the line that says, you need to give us this information, so that we can determine what can or cannot be.
I, I understand, but then, you know, I'm just kind of looking ahead. And, you know, these businesses are investing money and investing, they're buying a location, all of this stuff, you know, we understand are serious issues, and they are so far from a park, and based on what this says, you know, they have to be so far from a particular piece of play equipment, which I think can put us into some precarious kinds of situations here. And that's all I'm saying. And I, and again, it doesn't have to be resolved in the ordinance, but I want to bring it to the attention of administration, because it does have to be addressed.
Councilman Nicholson?
We're, is this common language, or is this extended from the medical language?
I've seen both in ordinances. Typically, it's just a reference to a park, but different cities have different definitions of recreational facilities and parks.
And follow-up, I asked that question, because I was wondering, I knew in the previous deliberations over medical, that there were some changes made to that language to make sure that if there was a downtown overlay, some of the pocket downtown parks weren't necessarily active or considered parks, that the, maybe that could have been a defining characteristic.
Order in the chambers. But, so again, this is specifying about for the application what they have to include. So, it's giving a defined location versus, because if you say from the boundary of a park, then that could be more vague. You got to give something. So, but I hear you loud and clear, we can keep looking at this further beyond- So, but I hear you loud and clear, we can keep looking at this further beyond even just this, this ordinance. You know, how we're defining public parks. But to go back to what the first item you had done, I think we would need to make it clean. We're going to have to do that as an amendment. So has the attorneys on the fly identified the numbers and items that we need to move the and their spouses to make it more language sound?
Yes, I've got that noted in my draft here.
Okay. Would you like us to do it now?
Yes, that way it'll be complete for next week.
So Councilwoman James is making a motion to amend for us to change the language that he'll state now, and then we'll see if you'd like it or not. Mr. Murphy, what say you on that language?
So on page five of the Omnibus Red Line, subparagraph eight, the amendment would read for a nonprofit corporation, all individuals and their spouses and entities with membership or shareholder rights in accordance with the Articles of Incorporation or the bylaws, and then striking and their spouses at the end of the sentence.
And is that again for number six as well? Or?
Number nine.
Or that's enough?
Number nine as well.
Number nine.
I guess six also.
Six and nine.
So six would cover publicly held corporations, all corporate officers or persons and their spouses with equivalent titles. I guess there is spouses in there. All directors and their spouses and all stockholders. I think six is okay.
Six is okay, but nine needs to have the switcheroo.
So for subparagraph nine, the amendment would read for a trust, all trustees and their spouses, any individual and their spouse or body able to control and direct affairs of the trust, and any beneficiary and their spouse who receives or has the right to receive the gross or net profit distributions of the trust during any full or partial calendar or fiscal year, and then striking and their spouses at the end of the sentence.
Councilwoman James, does that mirror your intent that for identified areas eight and nine, it moves and their spouses so that way it shows when it's talking about an individual and their spouse?
Yes.
Et cetera, and their spouse? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman James and seconded by Councilman Nicholson that that language be amended accordingly. Any discussion? Mayor Grimaldi?
I assume that the intent here was that any individual who has these ownership interests or, in the case of a trust, is a trustee, plus their spouses, even if the spouse doesn't have an ownership interest or is not themselves a trustee. And I'm wondering if the proposed amendment makes that ambiguous, that it says by saying any individual and their spouses with an ownership interest, that it could be read to say that the spouse only has to be disclosed if the spouse has an ownership interest, which I don't think was the original intent.
No, the intent, I think, is to understand the close family relationship of a spouse who might be part of a cartel, but there's, the person applying has a different kind of public entity. So the intent is to try to determine if a spouse creates a, an issue with that person holding an ownership interest.
If that's the case, don't we want to keep and their spouses at the end? I recognize that in number eight, it's a little ambiguous because we're not just talking about individuals, we're also talking about entities. But that could be addressed by adding on a sentence or something like, in the, in the case of individuals under this subsection, applicants must also disclose their spouse.
So you're talking about subparagraph nine?
I am, but also in subparagraph eight, it says all individuals with membership or shareholder rights. So it's not just about entities.
So you're suggesting and their spouses come after rights?
I am.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm not. I'm suggesting keeping it either at the end of the sentence or having an additional sentence added on after deleting and their spouses that says, in the case of disclosure for individuals under this subsection, their spouses need to be disclosed as well. I think the problem is if you put it after rights, you're breaking up with membership or shareholder rights in accordance with the Articles of Incorporation or the bylaws, which I don't think is the intent either.
No, but you're going to have applications where an entity might own 50%, and so that entity would have to disclose their members or shareholders and their spouses as part of the application process. So the entities wouldn't be exempt if they have members that have spouses.
I'm questioning in part the amendments in general, because if the intent is for the spouses to be disclosed, I, and I'm seeking your counsel about how to word this in a way that doesn't create any ambiguity, that spouses, that a reader or a plaintiff could assert that the spouses only have to be disclosed if the spouses themselves have an ownership interest or shareholder rights.
Deputy Mayor?
Attorney, I think the ultimate question that's being asked here is that, if I understood the councilwoman's original request properly, is that as she read it, and their spouses being at the end of the sentence was a typo and a mistake. As I'm hearing the mayor, he is suggesting that that was, that it was put at the end of the sentence intentionally for legal reading reasons. And so can you address that? As it is written, is it a typo or mistake, or does it actually convey potentially a different legal reading than moving the wording as the councilwoman had suggested?
So I, my review of sub eight and nine, originally, I thought and their spouses at the end was a correct way of covering all the bases with any potential applicant who had a spouse that should be disclosed, whether they were part of an entity or an individual, or a trustee, or a beneficiary, whatever the case might be.
Any further debate? The motion before us is the amending it to move the and their spouse language. It's been moved and seconded. Sounds like the mayor is advocating against that amendment.
Like to remove my support for that amendment.
Nicholson yanks his second. Is there anyone else who wants to second it? I am sorry to report, your amendment withers on the vine due to lack of a second, Councilwoman James. So the and their spouses floats at the end, period. Are there any, and did you have other items? You identified those two.
Those were.
Those were the two. Other amendments or discussion from other council members? Okay, my final amendment goes to the number of retailers, because right now what we have is 15, and then we also have five social equity. And the question that has been brought up by a few folks, myself included, is that this council will ultimately hear zoning, proposed zoning changes after the Planning Commission has a public hearing next week. There'll be sort of zoning changes that will come to us with two readings. It's in those zoning changes where the, how those number of retailers are distributed, and then also how those social equity retailers are distributed. This ordinance doesn't speak to that. It will come in the zoning. So the guts of the zoning spells out that. Last week, we had a resolution that we considered about the establishment of a Woodward Gateway District. That failed three to three. I was one of the no votes, and the, because it didn't have a majority, it failed due to lack of majority. And my big concern was that the Gateway, Woodward Gateway District is smaller, it's more compact, and so I wouldn't want it loaded up with a number of retailers and potentially social equity retailers. And since that question wasn't answered for me, or I didn't feel that I had satisfactorily was reassured knowing that this wouldn't become a Woodward Gateway District that had a bunch, even more than others, in part because of the social equity retailer path. Since last week, I've done more research to find out, you know, when through the zoning changes, we'll be able to make that call. But I do feel more comfortable us recommending to the Planning Commission the establishing of a Woodward overlay, Gateway overlay district, but that we may want to have, not saying five, but it maybe makes more sense that it's three or some other modified amount because it's a smaller footprint. So we'd be looking at, right now, the language says 15. And in the zoning changes that come, it'll say where those 15 go. So if we are up for doing a Woodward overlay, Woodward Gateway overlay district, we'd want to change the number from 15. And so I want to hear council feedback on, one, if we want to reconsider the Woodward Gateway overlay district, and then, two, how many should we try and proactively anticipate that we'd want to earmark for all the overlay districts, including the Woodward Gateway? Right now, we have 15, and then we have five social equity retailers. It's not spelled out precisely right now where those five social equity retailers would come. Again, that'll come through the zoning change. So it would similarly, the number of retailers for our overlay districts, that'll come through the zoning changes. So that'll come at the next bite of the apple that we have after Planning Commission gives us a recommendation, depending on what their recommendation is. So I just wanted to, I could make that amendment now where I say, I'm proposing that we change from 15 retailers up to 18, and maybe we keep it at five at social equity retailers. But before I start the headache of starting amendments, et cetera, I want to get a pulse from where other council members were on that. Because we are at this ordinance, essentially, we're doing our last final amendments, if there is that, that interest, we could then revisit the resolution that failed three-three last week, because it doesn't speak to number of them. It just talks about recommending with the proposed zoning amendments, an adult use marijuana business overlay district that includes those properties in the city that are located along Woodward Avenue between Auburn Road slash Orchard Lake Road and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard South, Woodward Gateway Overlay District, number four. So I know I'm introducing a curve ball, but I, it's sort of revisiting the conversation we had last week, but asking that question of, if there's a Woodward Overlay District, number four, how many are we thinking for retailers that we want to recommend or encourage the Planning Commission to consider? And that's true also with social equity retailers. Right now, we're at five social equity retailers, and we're also at 15 retailers overall, which in our understanding, we anticipate that would be five for the downtown overlay district, five for the Walton Overlay District, five for the Caesar Chavez District, because that mirrors what's happened in the past. But we actually haven't gotten to that part yet. That part comes next. And I want to make sure, my understanding of the zoning amendment changes, am I correct, Attorney Murphy, that that's when it would determine what would be the composition of those retailers or even the social equity retailers as it relates to any of the overlay districts? What are we looking at there?
Yes, so for each zoning district in your zoning ordinance, you would have that special exception for retailer or social equity retailer or other type of adult marijuana use, and there would be a number for that district in the zoning ordinance.
But so, in terms of what's before us right now, our second reading for the adult use marijuana business licensing, really what we'd be impacting right now is the number of retailers and social equity. It comes next. How many overlay districts there are, and then the distribution to those overlay districts. That's through the zoning, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So council members, how are you feeling about, you know, we'd be creating a modified approach, at least through our recommendation, that it isn't necessarily going to have the same number of, number of retailers as the other overlay districts? And my, the thought process I'm having is that, one, it's a gateway district, and two, the footprint that it has in terms of it as the thoroughfare, the compact nature, especially with, with social equity retailers. I want to ask the question, what do we do when it comes to the proximity of these retailers to one another? This ordinance isn't the place to do that, right? That that would be a zoning question if there was essentially any buffer requirements? And did the previous zoning language for medical locations, did that speak to a buffer so that way it wasn't necessarily, you know, retailer, 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 or establishment, 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 like three or four in a row? What's the, what's the appropriate way to thread that needle?
Generally, you have a spacing buffer in the zoning ordinance, but I have seen them in regulatory ordinances where they call it spacing as opposed to a distance requirement in zoning. It's more common to see it in a zoning ordinance.
Okay. And I'm comfortable with it being, you know, contemplated the zoning approach.
And you can see 1,000 feet between facilities or 500 feet, it's really a policy choice for the, for the council.
So before I make the change to the totals, how are council members feeling? If there is a Woodward Gateway Overlay District, are you thinking that you'd want it to be five? Are you thinking three, two? Because that'll change the total for what we're coming in, because right now, we're at 15 with the notion that it'd be 555 for the existing three overlay districts. Any feedback from anybody? Pro Tem Carrington?
Well, I don't know, it seemed like we, we should vote on the, I mean, the district first and then debate how many we want in that particular district, if you, if you plan on bringing that back to the table.
Well, I would only be doing it, because if this amendment fails and we're still at 15, I won't make the motion to reconsider, you know, I won't bring it up if, if there is, if there's that sense. Because my hesitation is I don't want five to 10 in the Woodward Gateway District. That's, that's where my no vote was. So my reconsideration of that is predicated in part on knowing that there's an interest in, in there being that, that restraint. But yeah, it's just a really logistics. Right now, we're at the ordinance, so if, if we're getting to that point, then next I would, I would call up that resolution.
So I got a question just?
Yeah, yeah.
So your concern is making sure that, that the Woodward District don't get overpopulated with retailers, right?
Yeah, I think it would just be crazy town for us.
So we also can limit, say, micro, I know we got right now, micro businesses can be anywhere, right? Why not just remove them out of the new district?
My concern are the retailers, but then the social equity retailers, because it isn't called out here what the distribution would be for social equity. And if you could speak to that further, I mean, that's, that's the point where it's stressed, right? Addressed at the zoning, at the zoning level.
From a planning perspective, it's probably best to have the dispersal in the zoning ordinance by district.
But so, if council members are thinking, because there were at least three council members that were interested in a Woodward Gateway Overlay District, were you thinking that that would also be five, just to keep it even across the board? Or is there any receptivity to us making it so that we're talking about 18 total retailers? And then when we get the, come to the zoning, it would be potentially distributed in?
Social equity.
But we, but the planning zoning can come through and say, three social equity can be in one, or, you know, two can be in one, and then the, we can basically make it so that we can't, we wouldn't see the concentration of social equity retailers in any of the overlay districts. They would have to?
We're just looking at total number.
Yeah. So right now, we're just looking at total number, and then the next round of finesse will be the dispersal of it. You know, where would that fall in the city? And that's a fair question, too. We, you know, if it's about the same for each one, then maybe we're looking at six social equity retailers. If the, if the notion is that we'll have four overlay districts, then there could be two social equity, or at least the opportunity for two in each of them, which I don't have any objection to. But again, that's, we're making some of these ingredients. But again, that's, we're making some of these ingredients without knowing the finished final product on these other things, just because it's the nature of how it's going to be finessed.
Well, I definitely understand your concerns. Actually, I didn't get a chance to make my other amendment last week, because the Woodward got ree-
Yes. Yes, because you had, you had anticipated calling for there being, from fifteen up to sixteen, which would allow, if it was evenly distributed, four, 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 four amongst four districts. I'm not interested necessarily in reducing the other, you know, the existing overlay districts, because I think that the real estate, the space there can accommodate them. But so, I, I'm receptive to a potential amendment for the distribution of retailers and social equity retailers, of taking it from fifteen up to eighteen, and then we could take social equity from five up to six, which gives the Planning Commission some versatility in how they might make recommendations, but ultimately, it would then be a council decision on how that dispersal happens. Am I, am I characterizing this correctly?
Yes, you are.
I will support, I will support that.
Councilman James?
Mr. President, I originally felt that those numbers should remain as they were, which would be five for this new district. I would support being less than that, I would support the eighteen, but my feeling is that we should leave them at the original amounts.
Okay. So, but your perspective is that you would see that twenty retailers would be the appropriate point?
The original amount, yeah.
Because there were five non-overlay districts, when you're looking at the, the framework for medical marijuana, but non-overlay districts were, in theory, could be throughout the city. So that means that those five weren't necessarily concentrated or saturated-
Right.
-in a smaller point, which is part of my thought process. I, you know, the, the city councils made the determination that, that non-overlay approach opened up too many opportunities, and, and too many Pandora's boxes in other parts of the city. This would be a sort of a compromise approach, where it's more surgical, it's saying, this is a thoroughfare that can handle it, this is a thoroughfare that could benefit from it, but it's still a more compact area, from my vantage point, that that oversaturation could be problematic for businesses in the entire city, how we want our, our city planned, that, that was my concern, that the Gateway, if, and now that I've done more research on how that's, the social equity retailers, we're going to still be able to finesse that further through the zoning. Yes, sir, Councilman Nicholson?
If we're making that argument, I'd like to see a study done. Right? I mean, if we're, if we're going to, out of just our assumption that this district, then what's the argument for downtown? In, in so many blocks, we're going to have five? I mean, we've, we've, I, I, I just, I just see us making decisions to placate or appreciate, and, rather than be factual. So if we want to be factual, if that's the basis that we're doing, and I think then we need to commission a study. And then we got to start this whole thing over again. You know, I mean, we, we voted on this. If we want to reduce it, I'd say put out an amendment to reduce it, but if we're not going to have that conversation, then it's going to get belabored weeks. Right? It's going to be belabored before a Planning Commission vote. I, I don't, I don't have an interest in belaboring the final decision, but that's where I'm standing.
So I'll make a motion to amend on page, for council's benefit, the page that we're talking about.
Page eleven, I believe.
In our second reading document, it's page thirteen, Licensing of Adult-Use Marijuana Businesses. I would make a motion to increase from fifteen to eighteen for retailer, and for social equity retailer, from five to six. And then accordingly, it would change the language that speaks to the number of total retailers, change that to read, it would change from fifteen to eighteen. And where it speaks, anywhere else in the document, to the number of social equity retailers total, it would change it from five to six. So I made that motion, is there a second?
I support.
So it's been moved, my, my name is McGinnis. It's been moved by McGinnis, seconded by Carrington, to, the amendment is to change number of retailers from fifteen up to eighteen, and the social equity retailers from five up to six. So that's the motion before us. We've had some tentative discussion, but further discussion on the substance of that policy.
I sup-
Yes, ma'am?
I support it. I think that the plan for the downtown, we do need a development plan there. I would suggest that, since our master plan for the city is expired, we need to get, you know, get that going, and really come up with a plan for how we want to develop, and see our downtown area developed. But I don't think that withholding these businesses is the key to that development. I think if we want down to see our downtown come alive and be developed, then it's going to be incumbent upon us to come up with a plan. We need a plan. And so, I, I fully support this. I think this is what's before us, it's the recreational marijuana ordinance, and we want it to be able to go forward, we want it to be successful, we want to be able to move this thing forward, and I think we need, it's time for us to, to make those calls. This is not downtown development. This, this is the approval of a recreational marijuana ordinance that makes sense for this city.
Other further discussion on the amendment before us, which would take the number of retailers from fifteen to eighteen, and social equity retailers from five to six. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the amendment, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
No.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Abstain.
Carrington?
Yes.
Four yeas, two nays, one abstention.
All right. So that amendment, that motion carries, the amendment language is approved, so that'll be included in our all-encompassing document for the ordinance of adult-use marijuana business licensing. Are there other amendments, or other discussion on the main motion? So, the, the working sense I have is that we will have an additional reading next week that has all of these many changes incorporated, so that way this council and the community knows precisely what is before us for that final document. Is that the, is that the will of this body, or would you like us to take the vote tonight?
I got a question.
Pro Tem Carrington?
So, yes, so, your motion that we just approved was for the Woodward District, and increasing retailers from fifteen to eighteen?
No.
No, that's, I just want to-
Just increasing retailers from fifteen to eighteen, and social equity retailers from five to six. That's the amendment that passed.
Okay.
There, it doesn't spell out the overlay districts in this ordinance. That'll come next in the zoning amendments that we, that we see. But I am going to, once this item of business is concluded, draw up the resolution that recommends to the Planning Commission about the Woodward Gateway Overlay District.
Thank you.
So, preference, would you rather us vote tonight? I mean, the, the changes were straightforward, but there were many of them.
Yes.
Clerk Doyle? Oh, we've got section numbers to contend with, too. Okay. All right. Any other amendments? Any other amendments? Is there a motion to postpone for one week?
Some.
Is there a second?
Support by Carrington.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Carrington, that we postpone the ordinance for adult-use marijuana business, or, that thing, for one week, so it'll be at the January 24th City Council meeting, discussion on the motion to postpone. Hearing no discuss, yes, sir?
Is that, why are we delaying?
Because this document doesn't have section numbers, and so the clerk's office, to provide synchronicity with other ordinance amendments, we need to populate that, but so that way the, you know, dozens of changes, even if they were small, can be in a final, clean document for this body and the community. Those are the two main, there's no other driving factor that, that's been made clear by anyone who's made the motion.
Hopefully, we can get it before the meeting.
Yes, it's a very good point. The sooner, the better.
It would be really good to be able to read something before the meeting.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone for one week?
I'd like to echo that. Getting the clean copy the day of is not acceptable. I, I need time to read this, so I'd like it at least 24 hours in advance.
But it will take many more hours.
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you. With that, roll call on the motion to postpone for one week, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Abstain.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, one abstention.
That motion carries, the ordinance is postponed for one week, it'll be before us again. So next up, we've got, I'm, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, that we consider a resolution, making a recommendation to the Planning Commission, that we consider it now, on the agenda.
Supports.
It's been moved by McGinnis, seconded by Nicholson, that we suspend the rules, so that way we can, or, I don't know whether I need to suspend the rules, I'm just amending the agenda, really, right?
But you've already approved it.
Yeah, okay. So it's midway through. So it, it is indeed a motion to suspend the rules, to amend the agenda, and consider this item of business now. It's been moved and seconded, this is about adding it to the agenda, so we can consider it now. Any clarity on that motion, on suspending the rules? Sounds like we know it. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Abstain.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, one abstention.
Okay. Councilman McGinnis moves, now that we have that on the, the agenda. I move a resolution of the City Council that recommends to the City Planning Commission to include within the proposed zoning amendments, to the city zoning ordinance, an adult-use marijuana business overlay district that includes those properties in the city that are located along Woodward Avenue between Auburn Road slash Orchard Lake Road and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard South, parentheses, quotation, Woodward Gateway Overlay District Number Four, end quotations, end parentheses, period. Is there a second?
A second?
It's been moved by McGinnis, seconded by James, that we make that resolution, we adopt that resolution. So, discussion. This was discussed last week, it's when it came before us for the first time. Upon further reflection, I feel comfortable with us pursuing that, with the hope and expectation that it might not have as many, the propensity to have that concentration or that density, depending on how we see from the Planning Commission, and ultimately, that we make the zoning changes, about how those social equity retailers are dispersed, and then how the retailers are dispersed as well. So, that is why I have come to this evolution of thought. Any other discussion on the, the policy implications of it? Yes?
I'd, I'd like a legal opinion as well. You know, we've heard changes, major changes like this, we've heard, and been able to speak with counsel in closed session prior to. I'd like the attorneys to be able to give counsel to the, to-
Legal pros and cons?
Yep. Yep, I think it's fair.
Are the attorneys in a position to provide us that legal memorandum tonight? How did he leave?
I'm not sure what type of legal opinion you want, but-
I don't think that it's, I think it would be an advisement in a closed session.
I agree.
Would be my questions, related to potential liability and litigation.
Is that something that's procedurally feasible this evening?
Well, we don't have a written opinion. I think you need a written legal opinion to go into closed session, for purposes of maintaining the confidentiality of the advice under the, under the Open Meetings Act.
This, or, this resolution that we're at least considering before us was drafted by the city's attorneys. We can postpone it for one, legislative council chair?
This, this might be a question then to Attorney Murphy, in terms of that resolution that they're bringing back, because it was voted down, don't they have to do like a reconsideration, in order to resurrect it?
I think so, yes.
And so my question is, which the clerk is going to have to pull really quickly, so you may want to just table it for five minutes or so, in terms of your rules, the prior council, in their rules, said that you had to wait 30 days to bring something back. So I'm not sure if your rules supersede that or not.
I believe that was changed.
Okay. Let's do a motion to recess for five minutes?
But I thought we just, we were suspending the rules, we could get it done.
To add it to the agenda.
We suspended the rules to add it to the agenda, but that's fair. If there is, we can make a motion to suspend the rules to waive that, probably, you know, like to say that that 30-day window is, is not applicable, but we'll still want to make sure we're ironclad with, with the implications of it. That is part of the reason why I moved the resolution, because I was one of the no votes, so, that I have that, you know, that it's sort of compels the person who's, it would change the outcome, because you don't want to make it where somebody just keeps trying to, you know, appeal and say, let's just keep voting, but it's not going to change the outcome, because I was a change in that. But, well, let's do, if we're up for it, let's do a recess for four minutes, to allow the clerk's office to confer with our rules and procedures, to see what further steps might need to be done, and then that could give us some more clarity.
Okay.
There's a motion to recess for four minutes made by Carrington?
Yes.
Seconded by James? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call on recess, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
What, what do we recess? Do we just cool off?
Yeah.
Cool off?
To get clarification.
Yes.
Okay. Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Cool.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
All right, see you in a few.
How are you this evening?
Yeah.
As have-
How are you doing this evening?
Pretty good.
I'm great, thank you.
You're great, too.
Yeah.
You're good.
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 Yeah.
You're good. How are you doing this evening?
They took it out. It's not in there. The 30, there used to, in our rules, it used to be that you couldn't reconsider something for 30 days. We took that out. So, we can, we can vote.
It's not in there. The 30, there used to, in our rules, it used to be that you couldn't reconsider something
I mean, I hope it's not the person that I play it on.
I feel I put this work on my...
You didn't know the actual song, though.
It don't matter. Chalk's getting me. Or read something.
Read what?
Whatever.
Oh. Oh. I'm sorry.
Let's get this part. Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you. That's where every heart goes.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you. I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you. I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you. I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you. That's where every heart goes.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did.
Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did.
Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
Okay.
I did. Thank you, man. Thank you.
I have to say, I have to say something.
I do better when I'm in bed.
No, actually, it's getting better.
They want me to...
I don't come here and...
So I got physical therapy twice a week.
Yeah.
So in between those days, I'm working on my own as well.
I'm learning a lot.
I got this list of exercises I gotta do every day.
I really am learning a lot.
Tomorrow, 7:00 AM tomorrow, I'll be at physical therapy.
Nice sharing the day with...
We marked it.
Follow direction.
My right, my right leg matches my left leg. You know, here, I had a double compound fracture. I got to get my drug grab on my board. So I had a bone sticking out here, and a bone sticking out at the ankle. So, basically, I got filthy. And those doctors, they saying, ah, very thorough. They was like, I didn't say, but you must be happy, you must help. A lot of good things, because you ain't crying, Steve. I wasn't crying. They say, I never hurt nobody. When they bones sticking out.
Oh, well, you don't mean the surgery?
No, 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 come on, no.
Just, okay.
Yeah, when they got me in the EMS, and got me to the hospital. And I was like, I shouldn't get hurt, though. I was like, you know, I was feeling...
Oh, they said when you...
Yeah. He said, I said, it's real. I'm sorry, too. Yeah. I was, I'm like, oh, so...
You're in shock, you don't feel it.
Yeah.
And the mayor?
Can't start without you, David. Well, we can start without the mayor, but very likely.
No, I'm sorry. I'm going to go with it.
Can the mayor?
Can't start without you, David.
Well, we can start without the mayor, but very likely.
No, I'm sorry. I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
When they bones sticking out.
Oh, well, you don't mean the surgery?
No, 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 come on, no.
Just, okay.
Yeah, when they got me in the EMS, and got me to the hospital. And I was like, I shouldn't get hurt, though. I was like, you know, I was feeling...
Oh, they said when you...
Yeah. Yeah. He said, I said, it's real.
Probably was in a little shock.
I'm sorry, too. Yeah.
You're in shock, you don't feel it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the mayor?
Can't start without you, David. Well, we can start without the mayor, but very likely.
No, I'm sorry. I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to go with it.
I'm sorry.[1216.12]
Bringing? All right, it's probably through that. All right, thank you.
One second. Yeah, it would have to be a light.
We get a verdict?
I believe.
Yeah, it was taken out. Thirty day was taken.
It was taken out.
Oh, okay.
It was taken out. Yeah. It's good to make sure, though.
So do we need to do a re- motion to reconsider, though?
Yeah, we gotta do that.
So the recess having been expired, we continue with the item before us. Clerk Doyle, would you need us to specifically, because I made the motion to consider the resolution, does it need to be phrased where it's a motion to reconsider?
Right, yeah, so if you would withdraw and then motion to reconsider and then take the vote on, yeah.
I withdraw my motion. Do you withdraw the second? I think it was Councilwoman James that might have seconded that.
It was James.
Yes, I withdraw.
Okay. I would like a motion, I make the motion to reconsider the resolution for the City Council recommending to the City Planning Commission. And do you second that motion to reconsider?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So that is now before us. The language reads, it's hereby resolved that the City Council recommends the City Planning Commission to include within the proposed zoning amendments to the city ordinance an adult-use marijuana business overlay district that includes those properties in the city that are located along Woodward Avenue between Auburn Road slash Orchard Lake Road and South Boulevard, Woodward Gateway Overlay District Number Four. So that's the item that we are debating now. This merely recommends to the Planning Commission, and so they'll be working on proposed zoning amendments, so there's a lot more distance to travel.
I take issue with the term recommends. I think it essentially moves the question to the Planning Commission for recommendation or not recommendation. We are not recommending that they recommend. We're asking them for their opinion.
City Attorney drafted it. What say you?
Take the mic, please.
So zoning amendments begin in the Planning Commission, as you know, and then they make a recommendation to the City Council for approval. The City Council's, the process is, once they make those zoning amendment recommendations, you have the choi- your choice is really to either adopt what the recommendation of the Planning Commission or send it back to the Planning Commission.
I understand the procedural aspect.
Okay, so where I'm going with it, though, is, and I appreciate that, where I'm going with that is, is that if the City Council desires to have the Planning Commission undertake, as they look at the zoning amendments, the desires of the City Council, the way to do it is e- either in the form of a memorandum or a resolution saying, please consider this as you look at zoning amendments to create a separate overlay district.
So this vote is to, in fact, recommend that this Planning Commission recommend something back to us?
It recommends them to consider establishing an overlay district, which would be very similar to what you would do if they had come back to you with a zoning amendment and then you had recommendations. Those would have to go back to the Planning Commission for those recommendations. So this is sort of preempting that a little bit by recommending that you would like to see, because currently the plan is to have three overlay districts and now you're thinking of having a fourth. The only way that the Planning Commission would undertake that is either through a request from city administration to go ahead and do that or proceed with a recommendation from this body to consider it.
To consi- again, there are two different things, to consider it or to recommend it. We're asking them to recommend it. We are recommending that they recommend it or we're recommending that they consider it. It sounds like it's a biased recommendation if we're saying that. It changes my vote. I would, I would, I would love to hear from the Planning Commission, but I don't want to say I'm telling you to tell us yes. That's my position, so I guess I could just leave it there.
Yeah, that's a fair point. How about request consideration? I mean, we want to formally communicate to the Planning Commission that this is a that this is a concept that we want to see considered.
Correct. I think that's exactly, President McGinnis, that's exactly what you're requesting the Planning Commission to do. Right now, so there's, the policy decisions are on these items. You've proceeded with an adult-use marijuana ordinance. Now, there are certain aspects of that adult-use business marijuana business ordinance that are affected by the zoning, because you've instructed in your proposed ordinance that it's going to be subject to zoning ordinance. Now it goes to the Planning Commission to consider how those uses, land uses, will be regulated, and that will become in the form of a recommendation to this body for formal approval.
I'll make a motion to amend the language of the resolution that replaces recommends with requests and replaces include with consider. So it would instead read, if this amendment is adopted, "The City Council requests to the City Planning Commission to consider within the proposed zoning amendments, et cetera, et cetera." Yes.
On that point, i- if he's making a change to the resolution, then is it a resolution to reconsider?
That's right.
Then it's not. It's actually a new resolution.
That feels even better.
Shall I withdraw my motion of the reconsideration? Then I'll just do a clean new resolution? Okay. I withdraw my motion to reconsider. Do you withdraw your second?
I guess so.
Okay. So with that, I move the adoption of a resolution that reads, "It is hereby resolved that the City Council requests to the City Planning Commission to consider within the proposed zoning amendments to the city zoning ordinance an adult-use marijuana business overlay district that includes those properties in the city that are located along Woodward Avenue between Auburn Road slash Orchard Lake Road and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard South, Woodward Gateway Overlay District Number Four."
Support.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded for this resolution that communicates formally to the Planning Commission about this fourth overlay district. Any further discussion? Sorry to have us twist ourselves in knots, but we want to make sure we do it as sound as possible.
I do have one.
Yes, ma'am, you have the four.
So this is, is or is not a reconsideration request?
It is not, because it's not the identical resolution that failed three to three last week.
So it's a new resolution.
Yeah.
It's not a reconsideration. Okay.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
All right, I've communicated that accurately. So, the resolution regarding Woodward Gateway Overlay District Number Four, any further discussion? Hearing no, your cough inspired my cough. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Abstain.
Six yays, one abstention.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. All right, we move next to the item on the agenda being, "Resolution Honoring the Life of City Retiree Samuel Max James." Is there a motion to approve?
Move back, Carrington.
Support.
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Parker. For that, I want to thank Legislative Council Sharp for helping us draft that. This young man turned at the age of 100 years. His life has come to a close, and many decades ago, he was a captain in the Pontiac Fire Department, so he was a city employee. So though that was many generations ago, we celebrate and venerate his life and his contributions to the city of Pontiac. Any further discussion on this tribute resolution? Hearing no, roll call and adoption, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the selling and conveying of the city's interest in the property located at the corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and University Drive, consisting of approximately .05 million acres, property index number 142142003, and the amount of $5,000 to Perry Drug Stores, Inc., a Michigan corporation?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Carrington, and this was discussed in a public hearing last week. It was discussed in multiple different meetings at a discussion and establishing of that public hearing, this is a tiny sliver of land that essentially was believed to be privately owned by the Rite Aid located at that corner, but through research and review, it's been identified. There is some time sensitivity, because there is a financing that's happening or legal process that's happening, and so we want to make this neat and tidy and update our records accordingly. Is there any further discussion? Did I miss anything, Mr. Attorney? All right, hearing nothing further, roll call and adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving Mayor Grimal's appointments to the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Carrington. Want to make sure I get to the right part of the packet, but with that, Mayor Grimal, you have the floor. Got it.
Thank you, President McGinnis. We are currently, I understand, on item number seven regarding the Rite Aid property. Is that accurate?
It's a new number eight, your Planning Commission appointments. So you have appointed Samuel Henley and Joan Johnson to fill two vacancies on the Planning Commission. It's required by our city's governing documents that the City Council approve or reject those appointments because of the importance of that, that public body. Mayor Grimal.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Mr. President. Sorry, you are more efficient than I gave you credit for, that we're already on this agenda item and not on item seven, so thank you for bearing with me. We have two excellent applicants. They bring, we think, important professional diversity to the board, and one of them, Sam Henley, is an engineer by background, specifically a civil engineer by background, which we think brings an important perspective to the Planning Commission. The other applicant is Joan Johnson, who is a physician by profession, and we believe that both of them bring a lot of excellent abilities, as well as interest in city affairs and conscientiousness to the Planning Commission. So we're excited about both of these applicants and recommend them for approval by City Council.
All right, further discussion? We want to make sure, yeah, Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, I was able to scan these particular resumes earlier. I see both, they definitely have education as well as experience in this particular area, which is definitely good. Also, I got a, just a small question, have they both signed their conflict interest statements yet?
Mayor Grimal.
They have not, but we require them to do so before they serve on the Planning Commission.
Thank you, sir. No further questions.
All right, and obviously, this is an important body. We want it to be at full capacity, so that way they can meet quorum and make full and well-reflected decisions. Councilman Rutherford.
So if we vote for these individuals tonight, that mean that they will be able to deal with the issue that you guys just went on in the next Planning Commission meeting?
That's true, yes. So they could, they could be seated at the January 25th meeting, assuming they take their oaths of office, they sign their conflict of interest, and they're not working that night. I mean, that's kind of a short notice, so.
Point of clarity, how many people apply for this commission?
Mayor Grimal.
Applications really occur on a cumulative basis, so we have reviewed all applications that we've received, at least since the beginning of this year. In fact, I think there were a couple of applications from a year ago, even before we took office, that were still in the possession of staff here, and so we've reviewed a number of applications. I don't know the exact number offhand, but certainly at least 10.
Other further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Speaker is this exhausted?
I have some.
Oh, I'm s-
Oh, no, no. I was talking to Brett.
Okay. So the resolution is-
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Looking at his resume and knowing some of the positions that we have open, did he meet the qualifications for any of the other positions that we had?
Yep. Yep.
Hearing no mayor or deputy mayor answer to that, this is the resolution.
Potentially. So potentially, but the question would be, is he interested?
So the resolution is, now therefore be resolved that the Pontiac City Council hereby approves the appointment of Samuel Henley and Joan Johnson to the Pontiac Planning Commission to terms expiring three years after the date City Council approves their appointments. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Congratulations to those two Pontiac residents for their willingness to serve our community. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize DPW to purchase two global M3 sweepers from M-Tech at a cost of $591,004?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, and it's been seconded by Councilman Nicholson for adoption of the resolution. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution to purchase two street sweepers, which we're excited about. I know that this is of interest to a number of council members as well. We came into office, all eight of us, earlier this year in circumstances where the city, first of all, didn't own any street sweepers, but also where the city didn't have any great connections or reliable connections for regularly renting street sweepers. In fact, street sweepers are in pretty short supply currently, and although we have been able to rent street sweepers at certain times of the year, it has not always been easy to do so. It is quite expensive to rent street sweepers. This will allow us to have street sweepers at our disposal throughout the entire year instead of having to rent them. It will also allow us to, on a as-needed basis with short notice, be able to clean up debris, including, for example, if there's a car accident and there's shattered glass on a street, this will allow us to quickly deploy street sweepers to clean up that mess. So there are a number of advantages here. Obviously, the price tag is high, and we acknowledge that, but we think in terms of our ongoing efforts to clean up the city and remove what can at times be a form of public or city-owned blight, that the cost is justified. The life of these street sweepers is expected to be, they're both used, is my understanding, but the expected lifespan is at least another 10 to 15 years, and we expect that to be well worth the purchase price. By way of comparison, it costs about $60,000 or $70,000 to rent a street sweeper just for the limited periods that we have rented them this past year, which is a couple months in the spring and I think a couple weeks in the fall, plus a week or two around the Dream Cruise. So, you know, it's, you know, depending on how one accounts for net present value and the discount rate, it's, it's close to being a wash and allows us to have these available throughout the entire year, so we can more thoroughly and frequently clean the city's streets.
Hallelujah. Any further discussion on the motion before us? Councilman James.
Yeah, I didn't realize that they, I thought these were new units, but he said that they were used.
Well, it sounds like I may be mistaken about that. I did say they're used, I believe, because I was not sure about that, and so, Deputy Mayor, you may know better than me on that front.
And speaking with DPW Director, I do believe that they are new, because when I was speaking with him, I also was under the impression that they were used, and he explained to me that these items actually go through a lot of wear and tear just by the nature of what they are, so purchasing used is usually just not a good idea.
President?
There you have it. I stand corrected.
Councilman Nicholson.
Will these be, will we take possession of these before spring?
We anticipate to have them by April.
Amazing.
Yes, in the production schedule with an ex- expected completion date of late April, early May, any deviations to the spec will likely require a new build with an extended lead time, so obviously, if we try and re-engineer what we're looking for, that would be blow that out of the water, but. Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor, are you able to shed some light as well on how these will be funded? I bring that up because there was some thought that they might be funded out of ARPA dollars, but I'm wondering if there needs to be some allocation of funds in order to facilitate that.
I will have to look back at the finalized plan, but my recollection is that, yes, we were using, we had set aside some ARPA dollars for this purpose.
Further discussion? All right, so we're talking two street sweepers, big kahunas at a big price tag, but big impact in our neighborhoods. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation funding agreement for the 2023 MDOT Highway I-75 BL Woodward Avenue and South Boulevard, contract number 22-5410, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Rutherford. That motion is before us. Administration, queue it up.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is an agreement which is required by MDOT in order to facilitate the reconfiguration of the Woodward Avenue and South Boulevard intersection. Just to refresh the public's memory, I know we've talked about this at council meetings. Originally, the intersection was not scheduled to be reconfigured until, I believe, 2025, and when all of us came into office, we recognized that that intersection was a very dangerous intersection, even before the MLK Bridge problem was identified, and we went to MDOT and pressed them to move this project up in time. So this project is now scheduled to begin this April and to be completed before the beginning of the Woodward Dream Cruise, and it will reconfigure the Woodward Avenue/South Boulevard intersection so that left turns there are no longer allowed, but rather only Michigan lefts are allowed. That will be a huge safety enhancement at that intersection, which has long, for many years, had far too many accidents. In order to do that, they will need to put in some additional turnaround spots on Woodward so that people don't have to drive too far in order to make a Michigan left. So we're excited about this. It's certainly a plus. It's going to be done at MDOT's expense, not at city expense, but we do need an agreement in order to facilitate this happening.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Parker, then Pro Tem Carrington.
But it is a small cost to the city, right? Just want to make sure I'm reading this right. Yeah.
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Pro Tem. It is about forty-some thousand dollars. So it's, there is some expense, and I appreciate you pointing that out, but it's a relatively small amount compared to the total project cost.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Councilman Parker? Okay, that handles it. Hearing no further discussion, roll call and adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Was that McGinnis? He's a yes.
McGinnis.
Okay, yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We are at our one discussion item, the discussion of the MLK South Bridge Repair Plan of Action. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. This has been an incredibly frustrating and difficult experience, the entirety of the MLK Bridge saga. We were not well-served by the engineering firm that the city had previously engaged to do bridge inspections. That predates our time in office in terms of when they started doing work on behalf of the city. It's, first of all, frustrating that they did not identify the seriousness of the problems on the bridge when they did the bridge inspection approximately two, two and a half years ago, back in 2020 roughly. But it's also been frustrating, once they did identify the problems with the MLK Bridge, they assured us that we would get emergency bridge funding from the state, which they said they would handle, and the city did not get that emergency bridge funding in the fall. There have been some other challenges working with them in terms of some of their cost estimates and some of the alternatives that they offered to the city. So it's been very frustrating dealing with them. I'm happy to report that we are no longer using them for any city work, because they have not served the residents of this city well. Having said all of that, we do now have a plan of action, and that plan of action involves immediately commencing design and engineering work for both demolition of the bridge and construction of a new bridge. We have had a number of conversations with legislators, including our state Representative Brenda Carter and our state Senator Jeremy Moss. Both Senator Moss and the Chair of the Senate Appropriations Committee, Sarah Anthony, who represents the Lansing area and who I served with in the State House, are going to be visiting the MLK Bridge in a couple of weeks. I'm going to be meeting with them that day. We believe it's very likely that we will obtain through legislative action the required funding to fund replacement of the bridge, even though MDOT itself did not come through through the typical bridge grant process. That's good news. The game plan and the timeline at this point is that, assuming that we get that legislative appropriation for this, which we believe is very likely, we will commence demolition of the Martin Luther King Bridge in July, and we will commence reconstruction of the bridge, beginning in October. beginning in October. That process will take some time to complete, but it should be completed by the middle of 2024. I know that none of this has been enjoyable for the residents of the city. It's been a, a real nightmare, frankly, for residents. But at least we now have what we believe to be a very likely source of funding and a specific timeline by which this will be resolved.
Further discussion from council members? Councilman Rutherford.
Two questions. You said you're going to tear it down in July of this year, correct? And so what is the timeline for it to be finished?
The demolition will be finished by end of September, early October, such that the reconstruction of it can begin in October of this year, October of 2023. However, the construction will take as long as to the middle, meaning the summer of 2024.
Okay, so my follow-up question is this. What jet, what motions are going to be put in place so that people know signage? Do we have that all lined up? Is that included in the actual proposal that we're making so that people know that it's tore down? One, two, that we make sure that we have it in the right locations? And three, making sure also that we have it in a far enough distance so that everybody is aware of what's actually happened there? Do, is that included in the package that you're doing for, on a state level? The signage is what I'm referring to.
For detours? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that's what I'm referring to.
Yes, all, all of that will be included.
Thank you.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, sir. I just have one question. As we're talking about that bridge, starting in July, and we're talking about that South Boulevard corner being worked on before the Dream Cruise, how will all of this work out?
There's no question that there will be difficult traffic patterns for a period of time. There's no question about it at all. And, and the community should brace ourselves for that. I will note that MDOT and the city have already begun planning to reroute the detour route. Currently, the detour route for the bridge takes people to Woodward. For days when Woodward is closed, they will be routed a different way that will not involve them being routed to Woodward. And, and I will also note that because the intersection of South Boulevard and Woodward will be wrapped up before the Dream Cruise, there will be a time period when the intersection of South Boulevard and Woodward is worked on while the bridge is down, clearly, which was always going to be the case. But the actual demolition of the bridge and reconstruction of the bridge is no more complicating than the current situation, which is the bridge being down and out. No matter whether the bridge is just down like it is now or whether it's being demolished and rebuilt, either way, people aren't going to be able to use that bridge. And so the real issue is the reconfiguration of the Woodward and South Boulevard intersection. And that is unavoidable unless we want to postpone that for, you know, a year and a half, which we don't think is advisable considering the, the dangerous nature of that intersection.
Councilman James?
Yeah, I know that we had some concerns about the original engineering estimations of the, the damage there at that bridge. What, what I'm asking is, did we get subsequent studies done? I mean, that we are now assured that this is still the case, that, that we need a complete, we need a new bridge?
Well, there, there-
Because I know there was some concerns about the original conclusions here.
That's right, as I, as I indicated. And we have gotten a second opinion from another engineering firm. That second opinion indicates that there probably is a way to do this without demolishing the entirety of the bridge. It would involve just demolishing and replacing the bridge deck, which is to say the, what's often called the superstructure of the bridge, which is the actual roadway and the supports immediately under the roadway, without demolishing and rebuilding the, the substructure of the bridge, which is to say all of the anchors that go into the ground, plus the supports that attach upwards from there to the roadway. That certainly would be less expensive, although still very expensive. It would not reduce the amount of time required substantially. It might shave a month or two, a couple of months maybe, off of the total length of construction. And the risk is that the entirety of the bridge, including that substructure, is about 50-plus years old. And so we could end up in a situation where, sure, we can just replace the bridge deck now and leave the rest in place. But 10, 20 years from now, it's likely that we'd have structural problems there and would end up needing to replace that in the future. And of course, at that point, it could compromise the relatively new work on the bridge deck, meaning that we would be penny-wise and pound-foolish by not replacing it all now. Because if we put in a new deck and that is ultimately compromised, you know, within the next 20 years, then we end up having to pay more for the bridge deck then.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Pro Tem Carrington?
Actually, the mayor actually summed up everything.
Any further discussion? We look forward to updates as it unfolds and let us know when there's further action that might be required from City Council to help facilitate some of these weighty concerns. Hearing nothing further. We're now at public comment. Pro Tem Carrington?
Mr. Carlton Jones? Good evening once again. I do want to say before I get into the public comment about this piece I want to talk about is I want to commend council once again for trying to resolve and listening to the citizens, especially Council President. I think you trying to come to some type of solution for when you can see the community is speaking and trying to get a resolve with council is the right thing to do. And I think if all council people are really truly looking at the betterment of the city, I know you got independent districts, but the city as a whole. But what I'm hearing now for public comments is about this workforce development. You know, time and time again, we have indicated about construction, things that we have being constructed in our city. And for a long time, we have very little involvement by citizens in Pontiac. Commercial construction is very difficult to get into. I'll tell you firsthand. Now, I'm a journeyman carpenter from the commercial side. Most time, people talk about the residential side. You know, we haven't had a lot of residential building in Pontiac. There's a lot of commercial construction that goes on. There's no reason that we should not be participating from workforce development. TDC was designed to develop folks here in Pontiac. We talked about ARPA dollars being set aside for workforce development. TDC has four years of experience, several cohorts, especially with construction. So when we are okaying construction projects, you guys should really be thinking, how can we incorporate the efforts of TDC, Carnev Group, in what we're doing? What I put before you and what I requested last month, Tuesday, when I was here, is that I want all the districts, this is not just for, this is across the whole city, that we can reach out and start training folks. We've got a major company, Wall Bridge, has been willing to come with private money and say they would do on-the-job training, paying on-the-job training for commercial construction. So when we have people come and offer construction projects here, we can start having local people be a part of it. So I want everybody to know if they need to, have a desire to want to get into construction, all they requiring to be getting it to is you have a high school diploma or GED. If you don't have it, we can help you get that GED. So you can always contact me. I'm willing to give my number out. You can go for a form to sign up with the Carnev Group, carnevgroupllc.com. Go to that website, fill out that you want to say, "Sign up here", and we'll try to get you engaged. But I really want to see support across the board. And I know the mayor knows quite a bit about TDC and the work we're doing. And I'm looking for the whole type, uh, council support that we can start developing the young people here in Pontiac. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Dr. Deidre Waterman?
I commend the work that Carlton Jones and the TDC has done to get the construction training and training for our young people and people who are interested in going into the trades. I might add to that, that, that process is facilitated. I, I do sit on the Governor's Black Leadership Advisory Council for the state. And with the infrastructure bill that was passed, she's also interested and looking for us to set policy about how those kinds of jobs and the ability to have contracts with the infrastructure bill can be passed on, particularly to minorities and those in the inner city. So let's tie those together and, and see if we can't boost that. It's been a long meeting, and I don't want to add on to that unnecessarily. But I spoke to topic number two, I think it was, earlier. And I'm not sure what happened, quite frankly. And I just want to talk about the process. That was an ordinance amendment. And when you have an ordinance, it's, the process is that you have one reading, you have the second reading, what you did tonight. You took a vote and you passed it. So that means that ordinance has been changed and it takes effect, I think, in 30 days. But then you went on and did amendments to the ordinance you had just passed. And I'm not sure that I'm following that process right, but that seems to me just to, somebody check in on that and see if that process was actually correct. Because once you had passed that ordinance, that changes it. And then if you want to again change it and add their amendments, then you start the process over again. An amendment is considered a change to an ordinance. So I just want to bring that to your attention. But the other thing that was confusing was, and I hope the clerk will pass out the documentation because the changes that you were voting on were not in the packet when it was posted. And generally, it's supposed to be posted a certain time. So because I couldn't quite tell what you're voting on because I didn't have what you had, and some of you, I understood from the confusion there was at the table, had just gotten it very recently, and so you were kind of confused. But what I did think I hear, I did think I hear that as Councilman Rutherford said, that these requirements were not dumbed down, that I think you said that you should at least require the Finance Director to have a CPA. Anybody who handles a budget of $40 million for the city should at least have that kind of training. I don't want, I don't think we should get into an argument of, no, whether you have a degree or not. I think that's not the point. I think there's something more organic here, and that is why you're having trouble filling these positions with the qualifications that have been accepted all along. And there's so many open positions that what it is about that's going on right now in this administration, that you can't get the qualified people you need and you have to dumb down the positions. That's the question that I addressed to you, and I think maybe that's the bigger issue.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Ms. Darlene Clark?
Good afternoon, good evening, whatever. I'm talking as a resident. To answer to the question, the statement, I'm sorry, that Ms. D. Waterman was referring to, as well as to maybe the council don't understand. I lived in Pontiac all my life. For a long time, I would never come back here and work. And it was not because of the people that I grew up and lived with. It's because of the, the city official in the council. Not only this council, but past council, past administration, all play a part in not wanting people to come back to the city of Pontiac to work. It's the attitudes of the people in the chain of command that they project to the cut, to the outsiders that it's not worth coming here for the arguments. There's no uniformity, there's no clarity, there's no, there's nothing. So outsiders is reluctant about coming in here. So for the past years, administration, long before emergency management, it's been a roller coaster ride to get the certificates, could get anything that's related to the city of Pontiac. So now you at a status where you want to up the game. You want to improve the environment. But then you have to put in the effort and the money to bring these people here. Education is a very big plus because the people that's been here has not always had the education. Experience is good. I'm an experienced mother. My oldest is 47 years old, but don't make me a psychiatrist or a doctor. It makes me a degree in what I qualified for when I went to college. So with that being, but doesn't make me any better than anyone else who does not have a degree. You understand what I'm saying to you guys? If you want quality, you have to pay for it. You have to put the requirements out there to up your game and your standards. When you work on low standards, you work on zero quality. This other information that I have for the mayor, and please answer this for, for the homeowners, for the people, the residents of Pontiac. When you are on TV, you are on a national platform. You are speaking from country to country, from Tennessee to New York. People are hearing about the city of Pontiac. It would be really nice, as the leader of our city in the city of Pontiac, for us to not hear from the co-partners, but to hear from the leader himself, which is our mayor. When there is a crisis, and we have had many crises in the last year or two since you have been administration, please step forward to stand strong on your intent and what you feel that you ready for your city of Pontiac. Because the people are waiting for you. We're not waiting for secondary.
That does conclude your time.
We waiting for the main person.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Ms. Lori Miller?
First of all, I would like to start with Council President McGinnis. I thank you for trying to make the situation better in regards to marijuana. I'll leave it at that. I give you credit when credit is due. And you are due it, and I appreciate it. So you did open the doors, and let's see what happens from this point on as regards to the marijuana. So I wanted to publicly say that to you. Because it's all about the people. It's not about us. Now, what I want to, I really want to speak on the qualification. Councilman Parker, you hit it right on the nose. I couldn't have said it any better. You know, we got to be a joke to the national because we all on internet, we all on YouTube. We're going to downgrade not having a CPA of running a government. This is running a government. This is not going next door to my house. This is a government. These people got to be qualified. I can say this because I worked here over 15, 20 years. That's what ran us in the ground because we had people that wasn't qualified. They didn't have the degrees. Now, you're going to come in and not give them degrees. You are correct. You set the precedent. This council will be forever remembered that you turned it into, hey, you don't have to have a degree. Just go ahead and get, uh, get your job. I bet you you couldn't see this bull in no other city. Rochester, Auburn Hill, you, they wouldn't play this stuff. We're a joke. Why do you think Pontiac in the shape it is? Unqualified people that wasn't supposed to be in it. And when Shimmel here, the mayor, mentioned Shimmel, Shimmel sold everything, nothing we had. He had to do what he had to do because it was such a shambles. I know because I was down here, I was fighting, signs all in the street, trying to keep our water. Everything was stolen because this is my city, this is my town, but because we had people that wasn't qualified. But you talk about qualification, you, you know, we talk about degrees. What I found, and, and I, I can't say this any better, the most important thing that you have to have is integrity and care about the city. If you got that, you got everything. There's no way in the world I would mistreat my people in the city of Pontiac, whether you like me or not. Because you know what? I sleep here, I live here, and I know how they live and go home and know that I screwed them. And that's what's wrong with elected officials all over the country. It's all about self. This is a servant job. Servant, is, you're serving other people. You got to put yourself aside for this thing. Who would want someone come here with just a two-year degree? I have associate degree, Ms. Rutherford, but you know what? You go to OCC, you go anywhere else, and you try to get a job in the big executive, they're not going to take my associate because you got- they're not going to take my associate because you got to have that degree. I applaud you, I thank you for standing up, I think you're very correct.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Oh, don't see Larry Jasper, that concludes public comment.
All right, with that, city council communications are published with the printed agenda as well as on the city's website. The main item that happens between now and the next city council meeting is that there's a nomination deadline for Oakland County Board of Commissioners 2023 Black Excellence Awards for this year. That deadline is January nineteenth. The award honors living black residents of Oakland County who have improved the community, made noble achievements, or worthy of recognition during Black History Month. You can nominate someone by submitting the form online. And nominations are encouraged to email supporting documentation such as a resume, news article, or link to a professional portfolio to B O C, which is for Board of Commissioners at oakgov.com. Again, B O C at O A K G O V dot com. And put the nominee's name in the subject line. And that New Birth International Church is holding their chili cook-off fundraiser January twenty first from one to three P M. For more information, call two four eight eight one two eight five four nine. Everything else, we can wait till next week for time. Mayor's office, would you like to offer your communications?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Few items. Number one, there is going to be a meeting, a community meeting regarding the Pontiac Skate Park Project. This meeting will feature a panel discussion about the project as well as an opportunity to create, this is a grant-funded opportunity, to create a work of public art focused on interactive or skateable art at Oakland Park. As I think everyone is aware, we are in the process of designing and ultimately installing and building a skate park at Oakland Park. That will be kicking off this year. And this meeting is an opportunity to learn more about the project. Also, in terms of the date of the meeting, it is coming up very soon, tomorrow, in fact. So this is Wednesday, January eighteenth at six P M, right here in Pontiac City Hall chambers. Second, there is another community meeting. It's the Galloway Lake Park Improvements Community Meeting. As we've mentioned at past city council meetings, we're very eager to solicit feedback from the community about what folks would like to see in terms of improvements at Galloway Lake Park. And there has been an online survey that I've encouraged people to fill out in the past. This is an opportunity to come out and discuss things in person. That will happen also here at City Hall on February second at five thirty P M. So please come on out, February second, five thirty P M, for a community meeting regarding Galloway Lake Park. And again, please do go online. It's still possible to take the online survey regarding Galloway Lake Park. So we certainly welcome you coming in person. You can do that and fill out the online survey. If you're not able to make it in person, please do fill out the online survey. You can find it on the city's website.
Your closing comments, Mayor Grimal.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin by thanking our youth recreation manager, Tanisha Taylor, and all of the city staff that organized and made happen a terrific winter fest here on Saturday evening. It was just terrific. We had ice skating, we had train that kids could ride. It was a really amazing and successful event. We anticipate it'll be an annual event. So if you didn't make it out this year, there'll be another opportunity next January. And we look forward to continue to build on the momentum from this year's event so that we continue to offer really exciting opportunities for families and young people in our city to have a great time. The other thing I want to just touch on again, because we heard from a public speaker during closing comment suggesting that other cities do things differently. And I just want to again reiterate that I'm not aware of another city in Michigan that certainly, including Rochester Hills, which the speaker mentioned, that puts qualifications for a variety of positions, including DPW Director, into city ordinance. If someone's aware of that, let me know. But to my knowledge, there's not another city in Michigan that does that. And all that council did tonight was change what the city ordinance says are required qualifications.
All right, Clerk's Office.
No comments, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Rutherford, District One.
Good evening. First, I want to, before I begin my closing comments, to acknowledge the passing of my stepfather, Mr. Andrew Johnson, and asking that you keep our family in prayer. It was a blow to my mom, especially and to us as a family as a whole. I want to take this moment to truly acknowledge the elephant in the room that we have to do a better job with dealing with mental health within our community. At the end of the day, we lost three lives because whether we want to say the services are here or not, that's debatable, but making sure that they are more accessible and that they're readily available is another conversation. And we as an administration, including the mayor, have opportunities to create a safer environment where mental health can be discussed, can be helped, and be treated. Because it's real. It's real in this community, it's real in all communities, it's real in the United States, but it's been heightened because of the COVID. And so it's important that we remember that there is always teachable moments. On another note, I'd like to say that I was enthused about most of the things that happened tonight, but I'm not. I'm disappointed. I have my reasons for being disappointed because I think sometimes we do what is the popular thing instead of the right thing. And some will say that I'm taking a dig. I'm not, I'm saying how I feel. I really want us to remember that at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for everybody and not just certain individuals. My District One meeting is January the twenty eighth. It's going to be at three P M at the Alley Cat. I like to see people there because it's a lot of things that's happening in my district that needs to be talked about and discussed. I also have fourteen free tickets to go see the Globe Trauders this week. If anybody wants them, you can contact me on Facebook or my Instagram or my cell number, two four eight three nine zero zero five nine one. They were donated by S K Properties for the game for the Globe Trauders on Friday. Last but certainly not least, I ask that we continue to keep the family of the Milton's in prayer. I ask that we keep praying for the council and praying for the mayor. And hopefully, one day I'll be back enthused, but right now I am not. I am not happy, and that's all I got. Have a great evening.
Councilwoman Brett Nicholson, District Two.
I want to remind all District Two residents that the District Two Advisory Council meeting for January is this Monday at Goldner Walsh at seven o'clock. We'll be hosting Lighthouse, representatives from Lighthouse to talk about their proposed site expansion as well as leading a discussion, Coleman Yocum will lead a discussion on the Kiron Court or Main Street project. I have received a number of calls and concerns regarding the situation that Councilwoman Rutherford mentioned with the Milton's, the Milton children. I want to urge anybody who has concerns with the state of the mental health system and the state of Michigan to reach out to the state representative's office as well as our state senator. That's Representative Carter and also State Senator Moss. Those dollars that you're paying in your taxes are distributed by the state, whether they come through Medicaid dollars or they come from state mandated programs. Those programs and those offices are the community mental health programs, which is where people with severe and persistent mental health find services. Grants that are given to nonprofit organizations come from community mental health and they're governed by community mental health. So the process by which that happens is through your state legislators. As well as the Office of the Adult Protective Services and Child Protective Services. Those are all with the Department of Health and Human Services. So those dollars do trickle in that way. Are there other things that the city might consider in doing as far as programming? Certainly. But when there are concerns about the status and the current programs that are available, why agencies respond and don't respond? All of those answers should be and can be answered through your state representative and state senator's office.
Councilwoman Michaela Goodman, District Three.
So just the first thing I'll say and I'll get past it, which is I believe that almost everyone up here does this job to do what they believe is in the best interest of the city. So I would just leave that there. So I think what a very important thing to bring up is it's very sad to hear about what happened in the most recent days with the family that passed away. And to my colleague's point, there are so many resources out here that are actively available to be able to help people. But unfortunately, those resources don't always make it into the hands of people who need them. We have not gotten the best at making sure that these things wrap around to truly meet the needs of the people who need them. And that's all across the board, not only just in this situation, but in many other situations where people are lacking resources, whether it be housing, food, shelter, or, you know, help of any kind. And I really think it's important that this is not a thing that happens unfortunately in vain and that we recognize, you know, the many issues that currently exist and how we can fix them to make sure that these things do not happen again. And I truly personally would love to see the city as well as the county government and on up do more work, especially not only just because of the situation, but just because the work has to be done regardless. I truly do feel for the family and it is a very horrible thing that happened. And I just truly hope that we can make the necessary change so that it does not happen again, period.
Councilwoman Kathleen James, District Four.
Yes. First, I would like to clarify some statements that were made last week during, I believe it was public comment in regards to Hawthorne Park. I want to state publicly that as Chair of the Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee, I had nothing to do with the choice of Hawthorne Park as the park that Oakland County has chosen to partner with the city of Pontiac on. There were some comments made in last week's meeting that were concerning regarding that. The truth is that we were approached in the, prior to the October meeting, I received a call from Mayor Grimal that the Director of Parks and Rec for Oakland County wanted to attend our meeting with a proposal. And I approved that, I added him to the agenda. And when he came to that meeting, he made and gave a proposal to the Parks Recreation and Public Works Committee for a partnership agreement with the city of Pontiac in regards to Hawthorne Park. So that decision had already been made prior to him coming to our meeting. In fact, the question did come up in our meeting as to why Hawthorne Park had been chosen. And I do recall that one of the explanations he gave, he said that the park was close to Oakland County's facilities, which are located along Telegraph, and that they felt that Hawthorne Park was a good fit. So again, I want to clarify that, that I had nothing to do with the choice of that park. And the statements made was that, you know, that the fact that it was in my district is unfortunate. You know, I can't, I can't determine what people believe, but I can say what actually happened. And leave it at that. So additionally, the first meeting of December, the first meeting of the District Four Community Council will take place on January the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Our meetings are held at the New Mount Mariah International Church, which is located at three one three Walton Boulevard. The meeting will be at six P M. And the church is right across from the Dollar Store on Walton Boulevard. On January the twenty-third, our Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee will meet at twelve noon in the Legislative Conference Room. And that meeting is open to the public. In fact, there were members of the public who were present at that meeting in October when the proposal was made from Oakland County. So those are my comments for tonight. I agree with my colleagues. I too am very, very much disheartened and just about the incidents that happened this week. It's, you know, the loss is without words. And I agree with Councilwoman Rutherford that we do have some work to do. We know that we just have a gaping hole here when it comes to resources for mental health. And so we've got to work on it. And I am, I'm confident that we will, we need to get together on what we think is needed in our city, and we need to work together, which is what we are doing. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman William Parker, Jr., District Five.
Thank you, brother president, and good evening, Pontiac residents. I just want to share with you that we certainly have had a multitude of discussions concerning medical marijuana. And I know those are necessary so that we make sure that we stay on the same track and that we are trying to meet the needs of all the citizens and not just a few. So I do appreciate this council for exercising their due diligence in trying to make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. I want to make sure, but I hope somewhere within the coming months and the coming weeks that we will spend some time talking about our critical housing issues, our, some of the senior issues that we have in this city. That we will spend some time talking about how to begin working on the master plan for the city, how to find good paying jobs, how we deal with the homelessness and feeding the homelessness in this city. I would hope we'll give some substantive discussion to the mental health issues that are prevalent in this city because obviously some things are keep, look like they're escalating to a level that we don't, because we have not originally dealt with some of the issues that exist. So I hope that we can spend as much time talking about some of those issues as we have spent talking about recreational marijuana. I want to thank Sister, I want to send a shout out to Sister Lucy Payne. I hope she's getting better. Every time I see her, she look like she's getting better. I want to remind her that we have a District Five meeting, February ninth, twenty twenty-three, at six P M in Alliance Den downstairs at City Hall. Also want to remind those who participate that the Law and Courts Subcommittee will be meeting January twenty-third at four P M in the City Hall Legislative Chamber. And finally, I just want to say thank you. If you are not doing anything this Sunday, come by to the new Springfield Missionary Baptist Church. We'll be celebrating our Friends and Family Day from eleven o'clock on. Come and have yourself a good time, jumping up, screaming, hollering, and praising the Lord. I look forward to seeing some of you there. I look forward to seeing some of you and hopefully all of you there. And with that, I'll say have a good evening, Pontiac.
Good night. I'll just briefly wish a happy birthday to former City Council President Patrice Waterman, former City Council President Lee Jones, former City Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke. They all celebrate a January birthday, as does the late Councilman from District Two, Don Woodward. May his memory continue to be a blessing to our community. And I, as we started this meeting, I'll end this meeting with honoring and reflecting on the life of Monica, of Kyle, and of Malik, who were taken from us too long, departed too quickly. And that will conclude my comments. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we adjourn this evening's meeting, hearing no discussion. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yes, no no's.
That motion carries through. We are adjourned at ten twenty-four P M. Thank you all for your time and for loving Pontiac.